Did you get it? Well, I didn't get it. If you go to this, you put it in there now, if you choose that link. And then basically.
Oh, good thing, I didn't think of that.
I'm gonna call this evening's meeting of the planning commission to order. For time of business is the budget allegiance of allegiance, I've heard Wednesday. They supply. Side but. But you're like, United States of America. And just in their own way for which two sentences, one my nation, under God, your musical, your delivery, your justice for all.
Yeah, let's have a rule starting down with Dave.
Commissioner Frankenbach, Commissioner Hidden.
Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Songstad.
Keith Davis.
Commissioner Scott.
Commissioner.
Hey, we've got the whole house. Any announcements?
I know I have.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Uh, which is the approval of nets of February eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Any additions, corrections? Oh. Hearing none, the midterms of February eighteenth, twenty twenty five are approved. And we'll move to public comments. When public comment, Dave.
Now's your time.
All right, I guess nobody wants to. No, nobody wants to talk to us tonight. All right, so no public comment, so we'll go to workshop discussion. Land use component, land use designation, descriptions. Land use matrix, land use map, so on and so forth. All right, so. We have, uh. Recently, Mike, Mike, do you have any update for us? Well, questions of us?
Chad has dropped the map. Steve, you know what? Um, she has an eighteen to turn. So they're after the application and get directly dropped in.
What you probably need to have with my company.
Chad, uh, planning provided this, uh, report of CUPs from twenty eighteen to through last year. And those are now in the application that you guys have where you can drop pins, comments. So those show up as like a light green color, I believe, in that application.
Not the same one that has the two hundred and thirty one comments?
No. Yep, so you have your comment review application with two hundred and thirty one comments, then you guys have the application, you guys were using drop pins on the, on the map to comment on the designations, so it's in that application. Um, and then, um, I'm working on updating the land use analysis application with the BLPs and the. Uh, parcel breakdown and potential growth and all that stuff. And so the twenty twenty four, uh, BLPs are in there and I'm working on the twenty twenty four parcels, so that should be done hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay. Any questions of, uh, Michael? Oh, we're good. All right, so, uh. We have, uh, the. We all received the.
Do you guys have any other requests from GIS before he takes off? Any other enhancements or data you guys want? Put in. Right, so we had this idea of, of having GIS to a word count, he did, that didn't really get what I think what we wanted as a result, so. Um, in the intro, Mr. Hidden and I worked up a spreadsheet and I think I provided that to you guys earlier this week. Um, so I think that I think met the intent of what you wanted, but I can give you the word count, I think there were like six hundred and forty ands and a bunch of isses and does. Um, but as far as figuring out what the, the, the topic of conversation was in the public comments, that's what Mr. Hidden liked.
Yes, yeah, I thought it was very interesting, um, for the, you know, the. Where the majority of the public comments came and the other areas, I thought that was very interesting, a lot of work been into that. I think though, um, at least my opinion is that. We need to kind of address the public comments maybe by groups.
Sure.
But then by the numbers, which is why I wanted to see this. Application of, uh, which has all two hundred and thirty one comments, I know there's. There are some that are missing here, but, um, the bulk of them.
Yeah.
Right.
I think the, the spreadsheet we put together has five hundred and five or something like that.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's some duplicates in that.
The one we did?
Think so, yeah.
No.
No.
Well, define duplicates.
Well.
I went through every single comment online. Plus the online ones that were received with the mobile app. For a total of, I think that's the two hundred and thirty one. Then I added to that everything that the county has received in written form at the workshops. Anything that was received via email. Plus I went through anything people sent to me individually via email. And that is summarized in that spreadsheet.
So did that filter out? The form letters that came in with plenty of people signed.
Filtered them out? No, I couldn't filter out, no.
Yeah, there's, there's the, that's probably paring down.
If an individual name was associated with a comment that got entered in here, I wanted to make sure that the spreadsheet, if nothing else, represented every single name. That was submitted so that we could say we've addressed every single person that wanted something submitted, but I did not filter out ones that seemed to come from some of the spam places that we suspect. Because I couldn't, I couldn't know in a hundred percent certainty what those were.
But you, what I'm talking about though is that. Email was sent to you and such the planning department.
Oh, no, those were filtered out. If I could identify that. Ja- John Smith sent the exact same email to the planning department and to myself, I did not count that twice because obviously it was the same person and the exact same email, those I were, was able to filter out.
So I think a number of those came like as a reply, a lot of those went to the county commissioners and they forwarded them to us with a reply to the individual.
And those I made sure I filtered out as well.
I had my staff, like the naming convention, all the public comments, and when the individual, the commenter's name first, so if it's Suzie Smith, Suzie Smith's dash. A date, and then if it's a reply from a commissioner, it was, you know, Commissioner Domke reply or. Something like that, so we were able to ascertain from that which ones were duplicates and which ones weren't, so.
Nor did I count anybody's reply, so Commissioner Domke, for example, replied to John Smith, I did not count Commissioner Domke's response as one of the public comments.
Right. But I think we have five hundred and five unique comments from individuals throughout the county, is that right? Yeah, and I can pull up that list and we can look at it as a group.
Listen. I mean, that's fine, but we, we have a list, we don't know what they said.
That's fair. Yeah.
So we have two hundred and thirty one, where we've actually got the entire public comment. And we can address it, you know, those that we want, that we think should be addressed. Um. Apparently there's two hundred that I don't have. How do I get those?
So all the written comments are in the land use component under public comments. That's where all the email comments are housed.
Unfortunately, because we don't. But they're not on this, you see this application?
No, we didn't map them. No.
You put it in there without us.
Yeah, they're just a bunch of PDFs, yeah.
So it's the one on the, under the public comments on the reviewing.
Yep, yeah, I think that's how he was categorizing us.
Yeah, as I reviewed every single one of my drop, all into the reviewed folder.
Unfortunately, there's no easy count. I know, but I. Is it? Count on that. It's a law, and so. I understand. So what Don's looking at there, which is the review file, does that contain? The two hundred and thirty one plus?
The spreadsheet includes the two hundred and thirty one, we didn't PDF the two hundred and thirty one comments received on the, on the map. But we, I think we have it in the spreadsheet, I think Mike provided or can, and we can add that to the record, but, um. We included it in the summary of all the public comments, with that, it was tried to figure out. It's really the keyword search, what are the major concerns or major topics of conversation in these public comments, so. From that, um, I don't think we have a positive or negative, it's just if they commented on the resort. Um, the designation, then there's marked as resort, right? So it's not a plus or negative, mo- the majority of those that came in were, you know, had some frustrations, but. Um, we just tried to figure out. What were the major points of conversation?
Okay. So. The. Not so. I'm sure I guess I don't understand you, so what's Don's looking at is, is the review file. Okay. Is everything in the review file?
All of, we got? All of the emailed, written. Eh, emailed or written comments.
It's not emailed, that's, no.
Yeah, so it's either on the map or it's been an email that's added to that file there.
Now the spreadsheet.
Can I, can I ask, I want to make sure I understand, so there's two places we can look, two big bodies of, of comments, one is all the stuff that's on the map.
Yep.
And the second is everything else, which is in that review file, so that doesn't include any of the map.
Yep.
Yes, now to make it easier though, I was gonna ask, all the comments that are currently in the GIS app. Are those in that spreadsheet you sent me also loaded somewhere on the shared drive?
No, I, I, I mean, I can get them in a, in a, um, spreadsheet from GIS and we can drop them in there.
That's what I used. And I can drop them in there too, I've got them in my, in my stuff. My file, that way if you wanted to sit down and look at every single comment received by the county, you'd be able to look in theoretically, if we drop that spreadsheet into the review folder that Don's looking at. That would be then one hundred percent of everything in one folder.
Well, uh, let me, let me just say how I reviewed this. I reviewed the two hundred and thirty one comments that are on this GIS sheet. And they are numbered, one through two hundred and thirty one. And I, I went through and I made notes on all of them. And I, I made notes by comment number, so we can actually look at the comment when we're discussing it.
Okay.
I don't know how to do that. In the other way, I, I, I. To me, this was really, really a great setup. Because it has a number on it, we can go to the number and we can say, okay. And some of them, you know, there's, there's multiple numbers that deal with the same topic, I, I grouped those. But the ones that aren't numbered, that aren't in the system, I, I'm not going to deal with those. And I want the problem too, because I, I've done the same thing and I, I went through every single comment as well. Just enough, and I went back a couple days later. On number one oh three, now, number comment, if I tracked it down, it's now number thirty five.
And you gotta keep up, man.
I guess so. And so. I don't know how that happened. I don't know, well, the, the numbers changed, I, so I, I haven't looked at the, I looked at the one that used to be like a hundred and sixty something. And then I looked at the two hundred and thirty one, I still got those numbers that have changed, right?
Two hundred and thirty one. I don't know where you guys had that.
I had access to it, I looked at it, oh, uh, well, in the last.
Okay, then I had, but I think some of you guys had access to that. Early one, right? Right, you sure, I haven't talked yet.
Okay.
But, but we have a bunch that.
Well, I think. I think based on the spreadsheet, I think we know, you know, I think we, we're gonna be able to go through the two thirty one. We're gonna get most of our, we're gonna have most of the areas where there's. Some concern. So. Let's just, let's just start with that.
It's like. I gotta make a suggestion and maybe, maybe streamline the process a little, I mean, we've already decided at our last meeting. That we're gonna make the change that was requested relative to the waterfront properties and that land use designation there. Could we go through, there's a large number of comments that were specifically about that particular issue. Would it be helpful to go through the list of all the comments, whether they came from the map or the email or wherever, whatever the source was? And identify all of those that had to do with that particular issue and they kind of put them in a bucket and said, well, we've already addressed these. Uh, and I think we would find that's a large number of, of whatever the.
According to the spreadsheet, it's like sixty percent.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then we don't need to look at those any further, because we've already, we've already, we've heard that comment and we've addressed it.
Well, we, at the last meeting, we addressed that. And. We addressed, we, we, we started the mixed use, uh, conversation, not sure we came to conclusions on that. Uh, and I think we dealt with some property on Hope Peninsula. Last time, and that's about as far as we got. Uh. But yeah, so I think, you know, anything that we change to recreational resort, we also need to change it, and it needs to be residential. Recreational community. Resorts, I think, so. Creates some, but anyway, um. Change all that, all that, so that's going back to the, to the original designation on all this, so. Um. So that we dealt with that, but I just went through just the two hundred and thirty one that I saw. There's. Forty two comments. That I picked out there on.
On that particular issue?
I, I don't intend to reverse any of those. But we already addressed it.
Okay.
Uh, but what I thought we should do is address some of the other kind of major topics. Uh.
So the.
Excuse me, why?
So the marching orders I got at the last meeting was, we have a whole lot of emails. The, the planning commission didn't want to review all those emails in a public meeting, you wanted to have this idea of like a. Keyword search or keyword idea, that's where the spreadsheet idea came up, but trying to figure out what are the major points of conversation. From there, you also gave me some specific direction as to the changes made. Um, I worked with GIS, they made all the changes you guys requested from the last meeting to now, so those are ready for your review. Um, the Hope Peninsula included, um, as well as all of the rec resorts, um, designation up and around Priest Lake. The only caveat would be if any areas that were split designated, we just followed a property line. So whatever the majority was, we made some, you know, call to follow a property line for those properties, so. That's the direction I got at the last meeting. Say that?
On the split ones, you went up or down?
Whatever the majority of the designation was. So if it looked like eighty percent was R five, we went R five. If it was just, in some of these, it was just that, it was like the line just cut off a corner, so we just followed the property, by we, I mean, GIS, I didn't. I did sit down with them and had a, there was a, a couple of these that we went through conversation as to what you guys wanted, so. I believe that was the intent at the last meeting, if you guys want to make any additional changes, I'm happy to, but, um. The two hundred and thirty one comments you got there, I mean, it's not inclusive, right, we have five hundred and five, and. I can give you, like, there are two hundred and seventy three that mentioned, you know, changes at Priest Lake, which accounted for about fifty four percent of the total comments. So. And I can show you the breakdown, it's in that spreadsheet that I PDFed.
It just happened.
So it doesn't, it doesn't mean that every comment didn't touch on just one topic, right, and, you know, several, so we have like the list that.
A lot of the comments that dealt with the waterfront property also dealt with, you know, not adequate sewer, not adequate, this, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we just, you know, if we change it back to the way it was. If anything, I. Based on the strength of the comments and their consistency of, and, and the stated issues, um, we say, perhaps other waterways. Um, some of the suggestions about looking into it further and so forth, that we need to. Deal with that as a separate issue, I think, as a commission to make some form of recommendation of how to proceed. Right, so I think last time we talked about. The fact that a lot of the, that some of the, a lot of the comments were really, really concerned about the zoning. It's not gonna be, you can't, it's gonna, with the comp plan. Trying to get through the comp plan and, and, and move forward, and we're not gonna be able to present a package that also deals with so. So, but we have the. The, uh, interest in doing that, we could do it after we submit the land use designation, we could look and see whether anything gets to be changed and finished and sold. But, um. Let me address that, let me address another, others, this sort of, uh, issue that came up a number of times. Uh, and that was whether or not we had the, oh, the other thing we did last meeting was. We are going, we, I think we decided to eliminate the matrix except for. We, oh, not except for, we're gonna eliminate the matrix and we'll put the zoning. Designations that apply to each land use component. In the land use, in the, in the actual land use designation.
Yep. And that's in there under version fifteen.
Right.
Which is, is our current draft, I figured that will be whatever modification you guys have, that'll be the final draft, rather than publishing several.
Okay, is that the one that Eric did or is that one you did?
I don't know if Eric got me his, that's the one I put together at the last meeting.
Okay, the, the one I sent you.
Mm-hmm.
Is the one that took out the matrix.
Correct.
Added the zoning, like, just like Alan just said, changed, got rid of the name resort out of the title.
Okay.
That's the one, last one I sent out to everybody, because remember you said, hey, can you send this as a Word doc since I'm a Mac user?
That's right.
That's the last thing I sent out to all the commission commissioners.
Well, and, and what, and you're, and you're, the, the one that you produced, Eric. You also incorporated, I think, uh, Dave Bowman's.
I did, that was the, and I made a note of that in the document, because Dave Bowman has sent in what we, at the last meeting, all agreed with some good inputs, so I did have those in, yes.
But I didn't incorporate any of those changes under this version fifteen, so. I just made those, just removed the matrix and then incorporated in the appropriate zoning districts include. And then what, from the matrix, I copy pasted the zoning up into. Because the other one was still, there was more into that draft than what was discussed in the meeting, so I just followed the direction.
There was more in what draft?
The draft you sent. So I thought that would be.
What?
We had, you had, you had Dave's.
Yeah.
Suggestions of that.
But at the last meeting, everybody agreed that those were good inputs and I thought the direction. We did not.
No.
Am I mistaken?
We didn't, we didn't say they weren't, we didn't say they were, yeah.
My mistake.
We didn't approve those.
Yeah.
I'll be having to discuss those. Which leads me to the next thing, so we want to go to the public comments. We have some suggestions, uh, that we were just referring to about the text, you want to deal with those? You want to take it in the comments? You're bothering him. Uh. Well, let's deal with Dave's comments. That's here.
I bring again for these are, I'm at Dave's comments. So.
All right. Going, just going back, going to, uh. The text that he's, that he was suggesting. Uh, he had some suggestions on section three point one agriculture. Uh, and. Yes, the first change he had was he, he did the second paragraph, he, he put it, he put it, he crossed out. Prime agricultural soils are a planning factor and an indicator of successful agricultural production. Other soils can also be shown in productive and agricultural pursuits. I understand that, that change, we, we, we wanted to de-emphasize. Prime agricultural soils. I thought we kind of tried to do that. To make it just an indicator. Uh. So I don't know, what, what does everybody think about that?
You know, if, if, looking at the summary. Um. Even selling, so. They, they didn't change anything as well as the strippers on the planet. There's one sentence that they had used somewhere, so that's made from the same planet, so I was gonna. The song, I think, or something, I thought we had to discuss.
Yeah, I was, actually, when I saw this, when I saw this, this strikeout, I thought, I was kind of surprised we left that in there, yeah. But I have no problem taking that out. Anybody else? Oh, her. I didn't ask you.
Well, it, it's kind of interesting, because some of the people. He's also heard comments that, well, no, we need to go ahead and, and do prime ag as a district group. Let's just take the Selly Valley places, I got my map here. Uh, it's only now actually shows the prime egg soils. The problem is up there in the Selly Valley area. A lot of those, those priming soils, uh, currently egg twenty. Does not have primed egg soils. And that could flip, those, if that's gonna be the deciding factor, whether it's gonna go from an egg ten to an egg twenty. That does not have primed egg soil, it's gonna take all those egg twenties and make them egg tens. And. I think. I, I just don't know, I, I personally think we should probably take primed egg soils out, that's such a. Even the NRCS, they have a little caveat, just like the wetlands ramped up, it says, for a final termination base, you have to.
Well, I think, I think we're in agreement about it, we're gonna take that out, okay. Just don't. We, we intended to do that, you know, we, we understand that. Uh, actually, putting prime, primex soil in there is actually limiting, too limiting. All right, so let's go to three point two. To forest claim mineral exploration. Question is to take out, since Idaho became a state nineteen eighty, or eighteen ninety, excuse me.
Yeah.
Um, let's, let's recognize the importance of mining, minerals, blah, 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 blah. I don't know, I thought it was kind of interesting.
It is, but.
We can take that out, but I don't think there's anybody that really has a fight for it over that. I'm gonna just speak up now. Well. Uh, our next strikeout is realizing the importance, let's stick to it so far, is to either allow climate lines, development line, gone. Everybody, has everybody got this?
Yeah. I don't know if I have the relation. It's, it was attached to his email from the thirteen week old. Yeah, it was, uh, February eighth. You gotta go down, page down the attachments, don't seem to open up, it's completely within the body of the document.
So apparently. Thought here is that was a little over the top. I don't know, I just, tell me, anybody, anybody think this is important to speak in or do we take out, I don't think it adds anything to the.
You know, all, I do know that it's, we have a lot of that, he was, he was thinking on art, he was sexual to the Bible constitution. And that, in basically states, forestry mining, and airport for half the, you can go ahead and you always send it to a name. Uh, for the complete. All known now. That's still in the constitution, so I don't.
That need to be on a comp plan now?
Yeah, it probably doesn't happen.
Well, should it be like this? That's the other question, shouldn't it be? I don't know that it does, I mean, whether or not somebody is.
It is.
Give this a subject.
Well, then to evolve or something, then yes, but I don't think it is.
All right, so we can take that.
What, what about, I mean, this is a nit probably, but what about the last sentence that he has struck out there, that most of the mining activity today in Bonner County and so, I mean, that seems like. That's a statement of the current state of mining in Bonner County, which maybe we should include.
Yeah, I think that's true, let's keep that in. And we'll take out. Realizing the importance to, you know, we're.
Everything but that last sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To most of. Got that, Jake?
Yeah.
All right.
Looks like some of the paragraph, I think, version one. We were leaving the, 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 the mining activities there.
Yes.
Um, yeah, like I said, another comment was. For you to basically create, I think this was on later too, was to create another. Another land use designation for industrial, I I don't. I don't see the point of that.
Well, you know, currently, if you, if you look at our current mining for transition. And when we're proposing those mixed use. It almost mirrors itself. We would see it, you know, just by changing the name from transition to mixed use, there's no sudden change. Uh, our terms of issues. Those language, and we're definitely right now.
That's condition. That's what I. It was our thought that. It wasn't transitioning from anything to anything, so it should be a different designation.
That's what, that's what we came up with, I think it's.
Well, going back to three point six. Can I make development, he's got some suggestions on aim suitable for land use.
Did we skip over uh the issue with. About industrial and mixed use?
Yeah, I I, well, I said, I didn't see the point.
Is doing which exactly?
Well, first of all, industrial zone. I mean, the the confusion, there's a confusion there between zoning and and the land use designation. So if if you interpret that as being, let's let's remove. Industrial from the next use, which I think is what is met, because he then has a suggestion that we create. A land use designation for industrial. I'm not sure why we didn't do that.
I guess I. I agree with his, I think his point, that at least some industrial uses are. Barely incompatible with residential uses. Um, I would actually. And this is going to be one of those things that's probably difficult to achieve, but based on the way we define industrial today. I would actually argue that we may want to create two different industrial zones down the road. Call them light and heavy. For lack of a better term, because I think today, for instance, a guy who has a little welding shop, that those fabrication is considered to be an industrial use. And and I think that kind of thing, assuming it's the right scale, is relatively compatible in the mixed use area. But but I can imagine some other large industrial uses where it it isn't. And I think that's the point, maybe from memory that you're making, and.
Yeah, I can see that point, but isn't that a zoning issue?
Well, but by allowing industrial in mixed use. Without conditions, I think that's the problem. Because then you open the door to. Which you opened the door to. But I'm, what I'm sort of locally calling heavy industry type uses. Uh, mixed in among. Commercial, light industry, and potentially even residential, because that's the nature of our, of our mixed use land use designation. So I think what Dave is suggesting is take industrial out. As of, take, take the industrial zone out of mixed use as an allowable zone. Or I would actually argue, the way we define industrial between, the the boundary between industrial and commercial is. Set, the way it's set today, I I would, I would. Personally feel like that's a little bit extreme, because there's some light industry type uses that I think would be okay in mixed use. So I would actually argue again, create two different industrial categories.
Well, and one other option, Dave would be go ahead and make those only conditional.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we talked about, we talked about that last time.
Yeah.
Um, but that again is zoning.
It is, it is.
So where Dave, where would you put? Where would you put? If we eliminated the industrial, the light industrial in mixed use, where would you put it?
Um, today with the land use designations we have.
You have to create one.
Yeah, you'd have to create.
It makes sense, it means it makes you just personal. And it becomes a zoning issue with the industrial. I mean, in all reality, most of our residential stuff comes up to the highways we have now. And as as this growth happens, it has to be presumed, it changes conditional use. But the issues there, if we take them all right next to my, there's nothing in standard residential soil. And they brought up your evidence, that's just the nature of the land uses.
Hmm, there, but there are residential uses in those, at least in some of those mixed use areas.
Yeah.
And there's, there's this adjacency issue, which I brought up at our last meeting. Which I don't know if we want to try to. Address that at all, but where where you have. For example, the mixed use area that puts up against a rural residential area. And the the uses, potentially, you can have adjacent uses that aren't really compatible.
Yeah, I don't know how you address that, actually, but um. Think that happened in recent standards. Yeah. Okay, so the real issue, let's just deal with one issue at a time. If we take. Is it the feeling that if we, that we take, if we take industrial, light industrial out of mixed use and create its own land use designation? Everybody's talking about?
I don't, then where are we going to go ahead and uh?
Is it meet that line?
Well.
Well, we'd have to create another color.
Just for my identification, what's, what's the downside of leaving mixed use as is? And simply dealing with it at the level of zoning? I, just so I'm not missing anything. Well, we are dealing with it at the level of zoning. But what we're saying is that in mixed use, you can have a variety of different zones.
Yeah.
Including industrial. And and what that means is you're opening up the possibility of having uh industrial and and. Residential adjacent to each other, not if the zones, which we decide later, don't allow that. I just wonder.
Let's think about this, so what? Based on the the map. What, what areas? Would be designated as industrial?
Well. For instance, uh. Up in, um. South of uh, Sanos. You know, in Sanos, where the mill is.
Um, yeah, well, yeah, but so. But we dealt with that last time, that's nothing we done this last time, we we dealt with the last time too, Jake, if you remember. We had designated some areas that have, I guess, industrial uses, you know, like in the Sully Valley. Not sure if we found one in in Sagal, but there was in Sully Valley that would just kind of look like a, like it's just a spot in the middle of an egg forest. We decided to keep those egg forests and not mixed use. And that was another change we read on last.
Right, yeah.
And I think that was, was that the shingle mill?
Mm-hmm. That was one of them, yes.
There's a gravel that covered the other bits that are just a single parcel. Could be a, a spot in the whole surrounding area of. Egg forest.
So I got, I'm just trying to see what, if we create another.
Looks like I need to fix that one still.
Designation of, of where. Well, again, um, I said, the prime example is the Coleman industrial plant. That's what it was planted as, that's what it's known as, I don't know its own, it's transition. But it's taxed that way, it's it's designated that way, that's the name of the subdivision. It's an industrial. And it can have full industrial uses. That's one, it's got to be more.
Is that the zoning level we're talking about now?
The pure land use level, what's on the ground.
So for this map we're talking about today, what's the point of breaking it out? Again, I want to make sure I'm not missing something.
No, it's just because it's. It's transition. Designation. Which that will be next to us, which will just, again, that was, we didn't know why the word transition was used, and we decided to use the original excuse and the place.
But everything, is it, is it okay? This is a fact that we've identified, one, I guess we can say that's not. That that area would not be appropriate for, for instance. High density residential.
Yeah.
Right. Which makes use. Can have high density residential.
You know, this is the whole discussion. Years ago about designating all the material excavation units as industrial. Overfill the park because of the complexity. It's a shade of that, but hopefully we can track that a lot a different way this time.
So I, I talked to GIS and they have removed all the mixed use up and around throughout Sully Valley, looks like that one was missed, I'll, I'll get that one updated, but you know.
And all the other ones up here.
Yeah, I I think anything along the highway here was, was left. I think there was a couple of those changes. This is Sully.
Yeah, that's.
There's a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's along the highway.
Yeah, exactly, I think that was the direction I was giving. There's just this shingle mill property, which um, you gave me direction to fix that and I'll, I'll modify it.
Why, why is it still outlined in pink?
That just means that it's assessor data, so that assessor data that's been used as a commercial, or sorry, an industrial use. By the assessor, that's how we were trying to, so early on, months and months ago. Um, there was an idea to re-designate some of these areas that have a historical use, I think since then you've kind of went back to where we started.
You know, it's not, isn't that based off the national land use category, risk or whatever it is?
This is based off the assessor. Um, taxation, so the use of the property.
Right.
N I C. N I C.
Okay, um, yeah. Alright, so what do we want to do with this? We want to, we want to add this land use designation or nothing? I'm okay with that, as long as we can find areas that would apply to, we could take it out of mixed use and create its own.
I still don't understand the point.
I don't either, yeah, I kind of, I think that. I thought that we're going to go ahead and address a lot of stuff. Uh, you know, as a condition, this, as Dave mentioned, part of mixed use to treat, that's always conditioned use. Um, I mean, that's going to be the better, better way to go, and we can also address some of those concerns and standards. As far as setbacks, it's like that.
Well, that's, you know, that's, that was where we were before today. Was that we're going to try to address it in a zone. And create, you know, a category of. Or create some uses out of that, would only be conditional. I mean, zoning still has to be addressed, so. Some of these uses are are industrial. Should only be conditional for me. Any of them. So that's a change. Alright, well, let's think about that, so we'll, let's go to. Let's go back to four point one. Well.
I thought you were just starting three point six when Dave asked you about the industrial.
Sure, so what do you do there? Maybe he took our bullet points out of there.
One strike, that struck out seven, is easily replaced by the statement, aim suitable for the reasons.
You don't, you don't like our bullets? Okay, go ahead. You want to come up here? You don't have to stand. You didn't, you didn't have, you don't have to stand there, you always take the mic, well, alright. Identify yourself, though.
Hi, Dave Bowman, Bonner County. For the record, so.
Sit up, you can sit up here. One more time.
It's not, it's not. So. In my uh notes. I'll just read, uh, revision is taken into account that while being collated, located with existing similar uses is desirable. The other two bullet points. Access to transportation or services, services are necessary for industrial large. Commercial uses. So the bullets kind of treated all of those things equally. One of them is desirable, the other two are imperative. So. That's why I took those out, because they were. Being treated as equal, and the way I wrote the. Paragraph instead. Address that.
So basically, you're, you're concerned about the one or more.
Well, I was concerned that all three bullet points are, 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 they were just saying that they're. Uh, should. Have, which is a word I really think should be avoided at all cost. And and so we addressed that, but it, that all three should be. Well, really, two of them. Really need to be, and one of them would be nice if it worked out. And and so by rewriting it, I. Express that.
Okay. So as long as you're here. Wash it down, if you want to, if you want to talk about uh why you made the separation of the industrial.
It was mostly, and I don't, somehow or other, I don't see it in what I wrote here, but the uh. It was the combination of high density residential. With commercial, which often is very appropriate in transitional zones. But to put, you know. In the, in my opinion. If it's going to be addressed in zoning, that's down the road and may or may not happen, and who knows how that'll wash out, but if you separate them out now in land use. You you're not risking putting high density, high density residential with, I mean, look at all those uses that could be. Crammed in together. With a, a bad outcome. High density, high density residential, light industrial, uh, commercial, heavy industrial. You just, the sky's the limit there with the amount of incompatible uses that could be crammed into one. But especially with industrial, that's why. And yes, it could be addressed. Through zoning, but but will it?
I don't.
Well, I don't know either, so to me.
We, we would address it.
Yeah, fair enough, I mean. The zoning gets addressed later on down the road and 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 is. A little, is very subject to who's sitting on the board also, and they can do fickle things. And and they, so if you address it in the comprehensive plan, it puts a little bit more. Something a little more firm in place, and it doesn't mean you can't further address it in zoning later.
But where would you, what, what, what area would you designate as industrial?
Well, the places where industry already is now, and the, and. And the other thing that I hadn't said in here, but uh. I think down the road, if someone had an industrial use that they wanted to put forth in a different. Say in a, in a, some other. Designation, they could come forth and apply for a comprehensive plan amendment to make that particular area. I mean, that's been done all the time. Inappropriately, but that would be an appropriate use then of that process. And and then, you know, they could amend, the comp plan map could then be amended. If it's suitable.
Okay, we'll come back to my question. Do you have any specific areas that you would, you would say?
I don't, not off the top of my head, no.
You?
Um, so I had a conversation with um Susan Drumheller, Sagal, Idaho, and I had a conversation with um. Um, so I had a conversation with um Susan Drumheller, Sagal Idaho, and I had a conversation with um. The executive director of the Economic Development. Corporation and he missed the deadline to make comments, but he was very concerned about the mixed use areas and we didn't address this in our comments from Project Seven B. But I would suggest, I I think it's a great idea to make a new land use designation for industrial, but get. Those folks, people who are involved in economic development and what they're looking ahead for, what would. Benefit the economy and where appropriate places, because he didn't think that. Mixing. Potential future residential use with future industrial. I like your idea of having a couple different industrial zones. That's a great idea because. Light industrial might be appropriate in some places, but not others. But I think it's worth having a workshop and inviting some of those people who do have specific ideas. As to where it would be appropriate. Um. And, you know, and 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 get their input before you actually start putting it on a map, but I think it's a great idea. Thanks.
So where was the area you'd suggest banking industrial to answer Alan's question?
My suggestion is you talk to people who um like the. Uh, Brent Baker with the Economic Development Corporation and folks that he might suggest who are interested in trying to. Um, you know, recruit some industry to this county for economic purposes because um they might have some ideas that would be helpful to you. I don't know. Where the best places are. I mean, I have my own opinions, but. I think it's worth a workshop instead of just spitballing it.
I guess the other question would be. Whether you look. Industrial and light industrial together, or you keep light industrial excuse.
I I would have grouped them together, but. Uh, Commissioner Frank Aback brings up some good points. I mean, light industrial can be. Compatible with other kinds of uses or heavy industrial or not. So that's about.
It was just beyond the specific use, what's next to it. How much don't put in there, but all those things. Yep. Many areas. That's for it. That's been done effectively. Yeah. So so where do we add here? Okay, so I think I'm regarding to three point six. Uh.
You know.
That's okay. I think three point six is, you suggested changes are. They're subtle, but I think they're good. Well, the one thing I'm thinking of is that somewhat that has this earliest future large scale version of that we're going. Should have. And so we're good on that word should have, but. Down in the language below says. Washington Best Runes of Best Located. Is is that not as? If either should?
Well, that's our language.
Well, yeah, but I know. So so that's my point is why not just leave our language then, yeah. Like they now should have. That one's on.
Well, well, the why is because those three bullet points were treated as with equal weight and they they really.
Says one or more. And referring to the bullet point.
Yeah, so to me, what what I would like to see out of those three bullet points is. I'm okay with locating. Industry uses where they already exist. That that to me is. Makes sense. We're going to create new areas. With industrial uses that aren't co-located with existing industrial uses, then the other two bullet points need to apply. But I'm not sure we need, I'm not sure it's even useful to retroactively try to apply the other two bullet points to places where industrial uses already exists. Exists.
Well, those are not conforming.
Because there's.
Well, they're not conforming.
Um. But but to me, that's the difference. If somebody comes along in the future and says, hey, I'd like have a new industrial use and I and I need to find a place for it and I like to put it here and I need to go through the process of applying for a. Uh, a comp plan change to create a new area where that can be. Created then the second two bullet points. About transportation corridors and urban services. Those are the ones you want to look at. At that point. Right? I don't know how to reduce all that elegant language off the top of my head.
I already did it for you.
Well, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Actually, I'm not sure. Do you have that and or clause in there? And I'm not sure between the best located and and or I'm not sure that this the whole thing isn't as 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 open to interpretation as the three bullet points were, but. I don't know. To me, it's not that big of a deal, I think. And maybe because I'm too close to it, but I understand what the intent is. And could interpreted.
Well, isn't isn't that solved just by saying other than and or just or?
Uh, but to me, that misses this subtle difference between. Existing areas where we have these uses and we're saying if you, you know, we're going to prefer, you're going to create new uses that are that are like those ones that already exist. There's a preference to do it where they already exist. Expand those areas a little bit rather than creating some new bowl somewhere else in the county. Where we're going to start building industrial uses. Now, if if for some reason we can't do that. Because we're ten years down the road and things have changed too much or whatever, and you have to create a new area with these sort of uses, then those second two bullet points are the key criteria. You're no longer thinking about. Um. Is it? Is it part of an existing area where those it's an area those uses already exist? If somebody's decided that isn't going to work for them for whatever reason. They can't fit there. There's no property available there. Doesn't make sense to them, whatever. They're going to come along and ask for a change. At that point, it's the second two bullets that we want to consider. Are there transportation? Are they are they adjacent to the right transportation? Services and do they have the right urban services given nature?
Well.
And those and those two, by the way, don't really apply where there's existing uses already. They've already decided that. They're they're close enough. Through a highway to do whatever it is they're doing. They're happy with it. And I assume that they have. A level of urban service service that services that is appropriate for whatever it is that they're doing. I don't know.
Uh, you know, in that first paragraph. Of that same paragraph, you know, Florida counties are just a cluster. Commercial industrial operations together. You know, and that 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 language almost mirrors exactly what you're saying.
Probably where we borrowed it.
Right, so it goes right along with what you're saying. Um. So back on that three point six, I. Seems to be that maybe. Along here, but. If you just say. Area suitable future large scale. Commercial industrial development. Uh, our best or should be whatever uh located. Where commercial industrial uses are are already found or located. One of the other two points.
Yeah, that would do it. That would do it for me. That would do it for me.
When I say it already. Oh, I see. And or take the handle. Alright, so. We'll say instead of our best, it should be. Although should. Uh, should be located uh where commercial industrial use already found or. Located. So on, so. Okay?
Yeah.
Now we're getting to the map designations, land use designations. And I think the point of uh the language of four point one is to. Um. Basically. Indicate that not every person has to be. Uh, for the same interest. Is that right?
Yeah, and that that's been a huge issue in people applying for. Well, compliant amendments and zone changes and whatnot. So. I I just think it needs to be emphasized.
You know, and and that part I I think I'm okay with. Alan, except that and such differences are not appropriate rationale to remember that. You know, we have that specific prescribed procedure group of. The information we're supposed to go ahead and give file with. Like. What I'm concerned about is we don't want to, you know, inadvertently. By having that separate same set part of the sentence. And such differences are not appropriate rationale to remember that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because if you if you have an individual property, and I think it's adjacent to. The zones are going into. It's not like you create an island. Yeah, I would, I would, I would take that and such differences are not. Appropriate. I would take that. I have a problem with this. You want probably the way? What's that? This is four point one, the first paragraph. Proposed land use designations. The suggested language is okay, except we get down to and such differences are not appropriate rationale. I don't think that's sort of that's something we should have in. Probably the rest of the sentence. Yeah. More moderate slopes. Oh. So the sentence now with and. Has that whole period. Full period of right. Alright, so then we're back to. Industrial or or not. I I would, I would take light industrial. I I keep light industrial in the next use.
I would keep it just that.
Find me.
I keep both from person.
Next use.
Agree.
Later. Description limitation with all implications that would be in this. It is our intent to address only. It is our intent. And we've been given our tasks to them, so we are to address it.
But we won't be able to address it if we have to keep stopping and backing up and adding new definitions that were supposed to have been done. Last year.
That's that's why you, that's why you have. That's why we have workshops and, you know, public, you know, participation. Well. Uh, there's some other of this which it is. So under what uh would have been number two. If then number one added the presentations and number two. No, we're not going to add that designation. Well, wait, but number two. It used to be number one. And it should stay as is, you know, presidential, commercial, industrial, light industrial uses.
Dick?
So we use those.
I know we will say that it's zoning. But is it, would it be appropriate or beneficial to? Introduce. The notion that some of these nuances in the mixed use area may only be permitted conditionally.
Even strange one. Sure, yeah.
I mean, that would help.
Yeah.
Guide people who come along later to.
Well, that was suggested alternative if if you didn't go for what I was asking for.
Yeah, how would you? So you have some. Some language, Dave?
No, I just said in my.
I'm not here, Dave.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Excuse me. Give me a minute to think about it.
Yeah, it would be appropriate to prepare them.
Well, I mean, you could create a new sentence and just say some uses may only be permitted uh conditionally. Um. And to mitigate impacts to adjacent uses or. And you can even go so far as to, we refer to industrial and light industrial. Yeah, well, any.
Well, you could have the same issue opposite though. I mean. You know. High density residential, next to certain industrial. Plus versus, I think just keep it a blanket. Some of these uses may require special.
Or there will be people who would argue that high density residential adjacent to lower density residential is an issue, right? So, yeah, I I think I like Eric's comment. Let's keep it general. But just introduce the notion that. We do expect that. There may be conditional requirements here. To mitigate impacts to adjacent.
Like you suggest. It's a separate sentence, but it could be taken out of context by some, so if we said. Under this land use designation, certain uses may be traditionally approved. So probably you can say they be only.
I I would say may may only be approved conditionally.
Yeah, everyone's right. Right. We don't know what those are going to be.
Right, right.
Attach it to this designation.
That's a subject for zoning. When we get there. But it does still add some protections to minimize the chances that somebody's going to.
Somehow to say, okay, so. So I I would add a sentence after. Uh.
I look for after coexist.
After coexist. That some uses. Some uses in this category. Uh, this may only be conditionally permitted.
Yeah, yeah.
So after the first sentence. Saying. Some land uses or some uses. Actually, well, we do differently. Why don't we say some uses under this? Designation, under this designation should only be additionally permitted. Yeah, because what's any there are. There are P or C in the in the. Zoning land use table. That says that there's no question. Okay, so there you just, this it kind of deals with uh this subject. This subject comes up in almost all land use, how many of land use designations. That deals with another comment we had, I think, from uh. Miss Kelly. We have, we have put in. In uh where we have adequate water, so we're, we have said as determined by relevant agencies, IDQ, P H W P, I W R. And Public Safety Services, blah, blah, blah. Um. Our intent there. Was, and we've talked to panel health. Uh, to. To have that be approved. Or at least a pre. They they bless it. Before you get. That is the intent of that. We can't, you know, we can't require that. Because it's our code. You have to. That's this, our intent there was to set that up. So we would be able to. Rely on maybe this this comprehensive plan. To acquire that in code. So, right? Yeah, right. So. Looking back to the language that we did not use from Dave Bowman's letter. Under industrial light industries, first sentence, uses require adequate water and sewer services and premises as determined by, so that was our language. Right. Should that just be? Reiterated on these that. Like. Excuse.
It is.
It's already there.
It's there.
So what was your comment? I I was, it was a comment we had. So we we've got it. We've got it there. We've got it neighbor and commercial. We've got it. We've got it under, you know, recreational. Community, takeout resort, uh. So that you're just saying that these are. Alright. But we could, we have a number of comments about, you know, we need to. Require. Their free approval and, you know, that's code which mostly came from. They truncated words in the matrix. Alright, so uh, anything else we want to address here?
Did we, well, did we? Did we tie off on the? Conditional use statement. It seems like we, I'm not sure we finished that.
What does uh? Alan, is there some reason within this designation? But I. If you look at a current zoning ground. Your conditional use of your heavily sealed. Unless. The kind of way you have.
Well, we'll talk about that when we get to zoning. I think it's a bigger, it's a bigger. Issue here, which is why it deserves to be specifically mentioned. Because it is a mixed use area, obvious incompatible, potentially compatibility. Um, I have a little bit of an issue and I don't know how to address this with the last s- sentence there. Um, and I'm hung up on it because of the road and. Sort of in my neck of the woods, which I'm not sure. It may even be, is Bottle Bay, did we decide that's a major collector?
Yeah.
It's a totally inappropriate road to be adding any bar traffic to, right?
Yeah.
And and.
Because of what it serves, that's.
I know. So I'm not sure that when we talk about at the end of this paragraph, may being on major minor collector roads, that that's that that's sufficient uh. Or appropriate, because I think, and there may be other examples, other places in the county that I I'm not familiar with, the roads that would be categorized as a, even a minor collector.
Well, I think, yeah, and those. Karen, on that too, about the designation, so they're compatible.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not sure how to address it. Because there's other places where a major collector road would probably be fine. Right, it's, it's more than just what category did it happen to fit into? Based on the function of the road within our transportation network.
Yeah, and. Isn't there some commercial use on, on, on the, following?
There is commercial, there are commercial uses at Bottle Bay. Um, the only access, Bottle Bay Road is not the only access, well. The part of Bottle Bay Road that I worry about, which is the part that winds us way along the lake, is not the only access to Bottle Bay. You can, you can go up the other part of Bottle Bay Road and get to Sagal Road, but this also is going to become an issue. I think when we talk about density and wildlife, I'm sorry, wildfire hazard and so on, I mean, I could envision. A major wildfires on the Sagal Peninsula that would force people who live out towards the east end. To use Bottle Bay Road as their escape route. And I, I can, I have, you know, that'd be horrible if that had to happen, there's too many people out there already to try to, it was all escape on Bottle Bay Road. If there was a major fire that blocked Sagal. You know. I don't know, this, so there's other areas where I think this, this categorization of the roads, I don't think puts a fine enough point on. On a number of different issues, including this one.
It, it, it doesn't, but, and this has been the hard part all along. The cases that have gone to hearing on files, it, it, people seem, people seem to be focusing on one piece of it. Well, see, it says here, this is a road, it's got the roads, so therefore I have to have this change. It's a combination of all of them, which is hard to then, even further hard to define. What is the percentage of all the five or?
Yeah.
You know, which. Yeah, but it's, it, it isn't a standalone criteria that that makes a decision, yes or no? How to get that across and how to emphasize that and how to keep the usage, it's just.
So, so one point I'd ask is, is there any? Area where being on a minor collector would. Be sufficient to say, well, we ought to make that area mixed use with commercial and potentially industrial uses, high density residential. I mean, a minor collector is getting, be a pretty small road. In most cases.
Well, it's quite a good figure.
That's the most.
I think, uh, it's purely a cutoff, Bay Road, they're minor collectors. Because of where they are and what they serve, but, no.
That was one reason that that one proposal would be to go.
It took, to me, it's something, I haven't, I, I've thought about this quite a bit, particularly in the context of the density questions about, you know, where do we put? Our five versus AF ten? Will we get into the, the rural residential areas? I don't have a good solution for it, but it's a concern I have, that, that this way of thinking about roads, it's not sufficient. For what we're trying to do.
So what do you?
Sorry, your suggestion to eliminate minor?
Well, that would be one suggestion that would improve it, I think, because a minor collector road is getting to be a pretty small road, and I'm not sure if I would. I, I mean, maybe somebody have an example of a minor collector that says, oh, yeah, that would be appropriate place to put a mixed use language designation, but I would think in general. Those are getting to be pretty small roads and, and probably not, um.
Yeah, you look at the list.
Is that, is that area, is that where the Bay Cafe is? Where is that, is that, was that? Is that, uh?
The, the store. Dave has the list right there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you get. Yeah, David, they and Dooford, they. Both majors.
Dooford, I would guess, has to be a major collector, right?
Yeah.
Do, Dooford is a mi, is a, actually a major arterial.
Well.
Well.
Yeah, that's where I think Karen's comment comes in, because that doesn't. With federal designation.
So East Dooford is a minor. But the, but the other two in District one and two are, are major.
Federal classification doesn't. On the local level, it starts with minor collector and then goes. So, uh, minor arterial collector and silver, so.
It looks like Bay Road is a minor collector.
Well, that's right, yes, that's what I'm saying.
That's all, and then once you figure out what I, they need to categorize.
Yeah, that's all, that's, that's the previous time of the.
They may not end up to be local roads, but my point was if you're looking for growth five, 10 years down the line. Our, um, road counts are pretty inadequate. That I, I'm concerned you don't have a good idea of where growth has been and, I don't know, but just also to take the opportunity. To standardize, that list should be done and give you a tool to know where you want to make those.
Alright, so. If we, if we eliminate minor, if we have a. Well, you've done anything major?
It is, is, what, the black line in our scene was, I wouldn't say systems such as state highways will major minor collector roads. Uh, what about major minor arterials would attract a higher?
Higher category, yeah, bingo. We ought to be, we ought to be calling them out before we talk about the collector roads.
Yeah. Well, this could.
Agreed.
My, my, some of my thought goes, would be, when we go through that map and what we propose, what we propose for an excuse. Some of those may not be on a major or minor or a state highway arterial. I mean, you need to go back and look at those again, because some of those already have the zone. I know we're not talking about zoning, but some are already zone commercial. That are on those major minor collectors.
You know, the minor collectors? They're on a minor collector?
Yeah, I'd have to get the list back from Dave to see which ones.
I mean, I, I think. This, this would be better if it was, to me, if we said state highways or major minor arterials. And left the collectors off of it altogether, that would be a better thing, in my opinion. Oh, I forget what was going. Crazy what we did there. And then, so examples of the arterials, that, that sort of at least south of the river are, you know. Dooford, Sagal Road. Those are the, those are the big arterials, major and minor, minor arterials in. In that, that, anyway.
Fifty seven, I'm right, that arterial, yeah, I've always said that.
State highway.
I would agree with Dave, let's just change collected arterial for.
Okay, major or minor, so major, is there a minor, such a thing as a minor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, major minor arterial?
That would help.
Okay, you got that, Jake?
I still think this is an issue we're going to have to think about more when we get into. Talking about the density question, because I don't think we're bad, I probably just.
Okay. Suggestion on suburban was to eliminate primarily, I'm not sure why you'd do that, but. Major collector.
I, I would leave.
Rural residential.
I think I'm permitted, actually, if I have to say anything to you now. Are, are we go, are we looking at? What we currently have up here, Ellen?
I'm looking at these.
Oh.
Which is over there.
Dave's on the right. Jake's editing on the left, I believe, correct?
Yep.
So here's another one in rural residential where we talk about major minor collectors, so we skipped over the arterials.
You know, the world.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not seeing a under, under rural as network there.
Right, midway through the paragraph, it starts, these areas are characterized by proximity to.
Oh, okay. Major minor. Major minor collector roads or a higher designation? Higher de, higher designated roads?
Well, I, I'm not sure that we shouldn't be suggesting that, that the criteria is proximity to major or minor arterials.
Yeah, what's the point there at all?
Now, it's, and that's still kind of a vague statement, what is proximity? That said, I don't have any other suggestions for how. But.
Do we need it in there? Can we just delete that whole reference?
I don't think so, because again, it comes back to. The question of not impacting the transportation network, which is something we heard in all subarea plans, they don't want growth to impact. The, the transportation network. So that means if you're going to put a higher than, this is, this is as. In the rural areas of the county, this is sort of as high density as we get, right, five acres and. And, and wouldn't want to put a large tract of new five acre zoning. Where the access was by a minor collector road. Yeah, well, that's even smaller, I think, I don't, I don't know, but I, I, I read this to mean at least. As big a road as a major minor collector, a smaller. But I, I don't think that's the right criteria, again. I mean.
Because like, you know, I'm looking at those, those are minor collectors there. And, uh, for rural residential, we're talking, something like South Sagal Road, Spade Road, Gomclub Road. Those are all minor collectors, but it's a lot of those areas actually have density as a.
But, but then I, you go to my other example, Bottle Bay. Right, that's why I say I don't think just the, the road category is sufficient.
Okay.
Because it, it, I mean, it wouldn't happen because of the way that, the development is already, existing development would not permit this to happen, but if somebody proposed a bunch of new homes out there that, that. Where their only route out of Sagal was on Bottle Bay Road, I would suggest that's a problem. It's a problem for traffic and it's probably a problem for, for, uh, emergency, even if that's in case of wildfire. So. The, my, my bottom line conclusion, having thought about this, is I, I know, is I think that simply identifying the category of the road is not sufficient, because. Because we have such a wide variety of roads within each of those categories.
So what would you suggest?
I think the, the only suggestion I have, and I don't have words to, to. Nice, nice words to write here, but is we have to go back to talk about the first principle, which is. I think there were two factors, one, again, all of the subarea plans said they don't want future growth. Or they, I think actually the way they said it is. They wanted, they didn't want a current residents to have to pay for infrastructure upgrades that are driven by future growth. That was one common theme across, I think, all five of them. And, and the other one, uh, is emergency access, and I think the most. Relevant example there is how do people get out in the event of a major wildfire? So those need to be. Consider significant considerations. Um, when we think about where are we going to locate? Five acre density versus 10 or 20 acre densities. Let's think about what is it, what, what does it do to the traffic? What is, how do people get out of there if they have to in the case of an emergency? And not simplify it down to, it's just, well, they're on a minor collector, so it's okay.
If you take, you know, your Bottle Bay example. Those are only five acres. Those are small.
On the, right on the lake they are, but. Up the hill, well, up the hill, a lot of that is government between, between the bridge and Bottle Bay itself, but if you get too far up the hill. But again, those are areas where, who, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, right? You know, we looked at that funky area out, out in Sagal, I apologize, always talking about Sagal, it's one I'm most familiar with, but out past Bottle Bay, where there's all those really weird. Very narrow lots that were created. Maybe decades ago. On a, on a really, a road that isn't even at the Bottle Bay Road standard.
Hey Dave, would it, if you go down two sentences past that, where it starts rural residential development is acceptable in areas with multiple access routes. That kind of touches on what you're talking about. I believe with acknowledging that roads are important where you've got more density. Is that enough, even if we were to modify that one sentence and just simply maybe add another word or two that is even more specific than what's there?
I like that statement, and, and I did recognize that that was there, it doesn't necessarily address traffic or traffic growth.
That's why I say we can, we can add.
Which is the other issue that was in the subarea.
Yeah, I think Eric might be right, I think, I think that might be right, that, that. Next summer's. That deals with the issue.
And to add, we could add one more, like I said, the one or two more words, Dave, to, to touch on the traffic. Multiple access routes. And where transportation, sometimes, I'm trying to think of how to tie it in with the transportation plans, we're not reinventing the wheel here with a different plan. Multiple access routes. And where something about transportation corridors have been adequately.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a second.
What would you say about traffic road capacity? Because that's really the issue you're getting at, but I think what you're going to say is that all our roads are way below their carrying capacity.
Two week discussion during the transportation plan update.
Yeah.
We're so far from congestion of any type on the county road system, it's, 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 doesn't mean anything. But, you know, it's all perception by the landlords, if they can't go out and. Check the mailbox, show them both ways five times, it's congested. Seven turkeys have been hit this year compared to three last year. But, so it's a. It's not going to gain us anything like saying traffic going.
Well, I mean, you could say something, I mean, this is, probably doesn't nail it down very much, but you could say something about where, and where the transportation. Infrastructure is sufficient to handle the anticipated traffic or traffic growth.
It's more, the biggest issue is.
Still becomes a.
Like we tried to address, we started addressing the single point of access to the neighborhood that involved the railroad process. And those could be blocked by a train or a crash or whatever, and they were stuck, there was nothing to do, you know. It's that, that whole safety aspect that's, that's better, but that is a case by case, and it's something that public works should be addressing. Absolutely in the plan, and they didn't. Because it was too, too much of a gang doctor post to get a hold of. But it's, other, other plans, a specific safety plan would address that, but there isn't one for the county at this point.
We, we just hung up on a major minor collector, but for real, you know.
They just looked at the, the map that, in the county, at this point does now arterials listed, that, the roads, arterials and collectors, so. And like that was short. That's what they saw, as of today, there's been some attempt to rectify it with the federal classification system.
I mean, the first, I would, similarly to what we did in the, in the prior. Language designation, uh, I would suggest we change major minor collectors to major, major, major minor arterials.
In, in the rural residential?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's.
I mean, you think, think again, sorry that you always go back to my neighborhood, but I'd worry more about proximity to Segal Road or to Doofert in terms of where would I put four or five acres on it than I would to proximity to, I don't know, pick a major minor collector out in either east or west Sega.
Uh, well, like I said, South Segal Road, Spade Road, Gun Club Road.
But, 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 but to me um, South Segal Road provides very good access to say both Segal and East Doofert. Right? So it pro, it comes back to how do you evaluate proximity to, I'm not saying it has to be on it. Or front on it directly. But the access needs to be, I would use words like the access to a, to a major minor arterial needs to be relatively direct. You know, these are sort of very conceptual, but it's fairly close, relatively direct. You don't have to, you don't have to drive on se- seven streets to get to that arterial. It's, you know, a few turns and you're there relatively close. Then that's where I would put the, the denser developments closer to those, to those arterials. Close to a minor collector, that, that doesn't make any sense to me. That's not really a relevant criteria for the concerns that we're trying to address.
I don't know, cause I keep, I keep thinking about the, you know, looking on a current pump. And these areas like, you know, Segal Road, Spade Road. Uh, you know, those are all fives. Five minimums. Out there currently, but if we adjust this language, they have to be on a major minor arterial. You would be able to go ahead and.
No, they would have to be on it.
They have to have to, proximity, this, this is where I, the, the problem is that proximity word, cause how do you define it? I don't mean they have to be on it.
So will we leave a major minor collector roads in rural residential?
Huh?
In the, in the language.
I think, I don't think that language really makes any sense. I don't think it's relevant to the concern, to the underlying concerns that caused us to address that.
So if we're gonna take that out, we want to be subsequent with any other.
Well, I, I actually am arguing we should use major proximity to major minor arterials, but then you have to think about what does it mean to have proximity? I mean, to me, Gun Club Road has proximity to a US highway. Right?
Twice.
Yeah, twice, right? It's not too far from 95 in either direction.
Well, I, I guess, I guess my thought feels is that if we were to go ahead and put that in, you know, uh, you know, characterized by major arterial. You're sitting there on, on Gun Club Road. And you wanna go ahead and do some five acre tracks. Just preclude that.
In my, and so this is where I think the words aren't serving the purpose yet. Because in my mind, what I wanna see happen, the answer would be no, it would not preclude that. Because any property along Gun Club Road has very direct access to 95. Right? In either direction, you could come out of your driveway and turn right or left and be on 95 very quickly. It's not that big, it's not that long of a road really. So, um, but on the other hand, you picked the example like a, a, a collector like Bottle Bay and that's not an area where I would wanna create the development that puts a lot more traffic on that road. Particularly if it's one way in, one way out, an emergency egress becomes an issue. So it goes back to this idea, I think I've said it a couple of times, I don't think just the simple characterization of the roads is sufficient. Because we have such a wide variety of roads that are, pick any category, collector, minor collector, major collector. You know, you can look at a road like Gun Club and you can look at a road like Bottle Bay, and they're two completely different situations.
If we just took out the language that completely, you're correct, right, approximately maybe minor collector, just eliminate that and not replace it.
Or you have to go back to the first principles, which again, going from the sub area plans, we don't want growth, we, we don't want the current residents to have to pay for infrastructure upgrades to accommodate new growth was one first principle that was common throughout most of the sub area plans. And then the second one is this whole issue of emergency ingress egress.
But, but those suburbs also run ahead, I know Segal did, they, they have all that there. So I'll say the road. Um, I tend to like that.
Which I'm not saying it shouldn't be, don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm saying that this language would allow it in other places where I think it'd be a problem.
Well, if you want, for myself, if you wanna get rid of proximity to any, any of those, but I didn't mention roads at all, I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with having something else. If, if, if that language proximity to major minor collector roads or any type of road, it may have some effect, it may be beneficial, we're talking about a bottle bay. I think it could have negative effect, gun for Spade Road.
Uh, so then we gotta go back to the first principles, pardon, go back to the first principles. Why did we write, we write that in the first place? We wrote it because we didn't want it to impact the infrastructure. We didn't want growth to impact the infrastructure. Again, go back to what the sub area plans all said. And we were concerned about egress in, in the case of an emergency.
How about, how about characterize my access or something? Reasonable access to a major minor or whatever.
Let you tie it, tie it to safety rather than tying it to a road type.
Well, that's what I'm saying, right? The first, the underlying principle was.
But you'd have to then replace it. I mean, you've got a foot in the door already by saying fire safety standards.
Because if we're gonna go ahead and use that language, they're talking about safety and stuff. When we go ahead with certain areas of the county, you can have some of these maps and if we can get past this first comment. To those areas that are, are currently intertech or ag ten, but we had several letters where the neighbors every one, four or five that have multiple points ingress and egress really close to highway, but we need to consider that as well.
You know, I think, I think we can take out that, that a whole language about the roads. And they'll say these areas may already be. I'll deal with the roads.
Except for further downward, it talks about multiple access routes.
Except, yeah. That doesn't deal with major minor collectors, that's not the more access. I'm, I'm okay to eliminate that. That we wanna do.
Full discussion, just further, the further you are away from the state arterial system. The lower the landing density should be.
Yes.
Because of all the, all the collective conditions. On traffic, oh, oh, skate roads. Conditions, hard maintenance, longer meets for people, longer travel time for merchant services, et cetera, et cetera, which is did not warrant higher density of fringes of the town. Put that sentence in there? That's the, that's what we talked about for six months. Or all the, all the, uh, subject that we dealt with definitely. It doesn't make sense. To say again, that's an ally and.
Yeah, well, and I, the, the issue is how close are, and, and how close are you to, to the, to the really big arterials, the state highways?
Well, say before, if you look at the map, the state highways are the backbone transportation system for the county period. Sort of the river, but we don't use the river. So where are you in relation to that? They're conveniently located in the valleys and along the rivers. And everything feeds to those, just like the water system. They just feed to those. So how far away from those should high density development be? Granted, we've got choice there is the outlier and that whole discussion. Because it's up there on top of the hill and they, they get this really road to get to it. But that's an exceptional case. We don't wanna see vast areas now, as it used to be thirty years ago, all five acre tracks possibility. Because it's just gonna overload all the system, not just the road itself, but the road as it's used for emergency services and for the UPS truck and for the commute and for the school buses on and on and on.
And so what we're introducing?
Yeah, well. It comes down to a sentence about this law, cause it's that explanation. I mean, it doesn't come down to a definitive criteria. What's a, what's a? I don't wanna say feeling.
It's a principle.
It's a principle.
If, if it's a set of principles about what considerations we wanna enter into the, to the decisions about where you're gonna put higher density and where you're not.
It's like there ought to be a couple paragraphs leading into land use that talks about density and where density should be. Then you get the designations. And then they should reflect that principle that's expressed in this broader paragraph or two explaining about where density should be. With all those collective variables.
Again, we can't pin it on, what about, what about something like these areas uh, should have existing road structure, road structure, uh, to service a.
But that also implies then that you can build up the road structure to allow.
No, it says existing.
Well, okay.
Did have existing. Road structure. Service.
Okay, let's see what somebody would say, okay, well, who's gonna pay? Who's gonna pay, found him $600,000 to pave this road because it hasn't been paved and I would, county doesn't have the money, so we're gonna up it. Now it can, now it can support it. Can't be early.
Well, the, I was gonna say the state has a program that allows for that to happen.
Well, the county does too. The county has a, a shared cost agreement kind of thing, which is where if they wrote that. And a few others. North Boyer was the same way. Just, you know, it was time and everything and the neighbors shipped in, now it's there and wow, we got a good road, we can and there, we saw a little, not a rational, but a few zone changes up on North Boyer. Because.
But it isn't existing.
Well. It's existing now. It wasn't five years ago.
So we're saying it's impossible to come up with any kind of definitive language it's going to?
I don't know.
Uh, well, so again, to me, the issue, I've said this a few times, the issue is that just simply identifying the particular category that a road fits into is not sufficient because there's such a wide variation in what's a minor collector or a major collector or whatever in this county. So, so I don't think that just saying it's on a minor, or it's, that's proximity to a minor collector or proximity to a major arterial, whatever it is. I don't think that's sufficient because particularly as you get down to the, to the small end of the roads, they're all over the place. In terms of the kind of road that they are. So I think we have to go back and talk about the underlying principles of, of why we decided to try to capture that idea. Like, like talking about roads and forget about identifying it's on a major collector, it's on a minor collector or what have you, cause I don't think that's gonna be sufficient. And I, I like John's idea of somewhere having a paragraph or two that that explains that thought process.
Talked around it for months.
Right.
I like my sentence. These areas should have existing road infrastructure to service the, uh, service this level of density. This is something I was kinda thinking about. Adding whole transportation routes.
Yes. Yeah.
It's a service area. Something like.
Something like that, I mean, it, it makes merit sense, but it's just.
I don't know how else you, I don't know how else you.
I know, I just, those examples I use, it happens all the time, leaving county, those things say they have more than 400 vehicles per day, it's a candidate for baby. And that's gonna make it better. It's paved out there, twenty, twenty four feet of pavement plus six foot shoulders or something, wow, it's all the same. Now qualifies as a higher class road. The red round, it's gonna be blast up. It's a moving target, it's just too.
Well, we gotta. I, I think, I think Alan's suggestion is, is, I mean, it's an improvement. And it's, and, and we, assuming we're gonna leave the statement further on down in the paragraph where it talks about multiple access routes.
Right. Work for me, it's a starting point.
And, and we, and you know, I don't know. Maybe the paragraph describing the general thought process could still be in there somewhere, but.
Yeah, why don't you work on a paragraph?
I might.
In the meantime, we'll just put in that sentence that these areas should have existing road infrastructure to service this level, to serve, to service the level of density. And may already be developed. Near near, near one single family, you know, for five acres. Okay.
Jake, are you putting that in?
No, I didn't. Right? How is this things over and over again, sometimes you always.
This one was the final one, I think, we all agreed on.
It, this, after these areas, set up our character by, we'll put, should have existing road infrastructure to service this level of density. And, and then add the rest of it's the same. And if we get, you know, some other thoughts before we get this finalized, then we can add those.
Yeah, we should care about that. One paragraph, so if there's actually now that things.
Did I hear you, did I hear you done? Say you, Dave, we're gonna work offline and bring something?
We.
By an existing.
Existing road infrastructure to service.
Adequate to service that level of density or some word like that.
Can't see what you're doing.
When we say existing density.
I would just say, uh, we're talking about the level of density in rural residential, which is five acres.
And the idea is that the existing roads will support future density.
It was road infrastructure, not network. That was Karen, Karen caught that, not me.
Had to adequate to service.
Yeah, that level of density would be good, that level of density Jake.
This level of density, the density that's contemplated by them. Land use designation. I have no problem with the other suggested changes to have, you know, my brother says to say, I think the fire just speaks for the authority and having jurisdiction rather than applicable fires. And I don't have any problems limiting the second half of the sentence. I don't think we need the words add, I think we don't need the words add, are permitted. Impermitted, that's really exonerating language. I think they, they said, you know, these areas, it's possible to put agriculture affect there. Also agriculture and forestry uses. I guess we already have, for our permitted. Also agriculture, forestry, forestry uses, all impact. I'm permitted compatible. I think, I don't understand if I I would, I would take out his suggestion, I'll permit it. I might add it as low as. Low impact.
Why do we separate? Why do we put residential in that second sentence there? Residential development. I mean, residential development is the foundation of what I expect to see here. It's called rural residential. It's the whole thing, you know, but.
Why don't you take that out?
I would put it in the first group. I would say. You know, residential, small scale ag and forestry uses are permitted. Low impact recreational development is permitted if compatible with neighboring uses and risk water treatment is feasible. I'm not.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily obvious to me why. I'm not, first of all, I don't know what low impact recreation necessarily is, but it doesn't necessarily bring to mind that it would necessarily create unusual wastewater treatment issues, but.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Do you get that, Jake?
In other words, we, we say small scale ag and forestry uses are permitted. That seems to be like, there's an indication this could be permitted unconditionally. And then the second sentence talks about low impact recreation and residential development is permitted if compatible with neighboring uses. Well. This is a residential use. That's the whole foundation of it is. So of course it's residential is compatible. With, with adjacent uses in this area.
So basically you've moved residential. Uh, development up to small scale agriculture.
Yeah, I would start with residential.
Residential uses, well, residential uses, small scale agriculture and forestry services are permitted.
Period.
Period, then low impact. Recre- low impact recreation.
Uses.
Uses are permitted if compatible, blah, blah, blah.
And, and then by the way, as long as we're thinking about that, we should bring that sentence about commercial uses up. In that same area of the paragraph, since that's where we're talking about uses. As you go down another sentence or two and it says, commercial uses may be conditionally permitted if shown to be compatible with the neighboring uses.
Well, I'm not sure though. I mean, so are you saying that?
I'm saying if we're gonna.
Just moving it.
If, if there's, if there's a section of the paragraph, two or three sentences where we're talking about uses, put them all in one place.
Right.
It'll read better.
Okay, take the sentence, starts, starts, commercial uses and put it up. Uh, af- after feasible.
Right. And, and so then that raises another question in my mind is, are we gonna allow? Low impact recreation, whatever that is. Conditionally or unconditionally? Should that be included in the sentence with commercial uses? Where it's, where it's, uh. Conditionally permitted if shown to be compatible with the neighboring uses?
I'd be curious to know what that means first before we decide what to do with it.
What low impact recreation?
Yes, yeah, I'd be interested.
Well, the.
So, so low impact, so then we should then change that entirely then. And put low impact recreation at commercial uses. May be conditionally permitted if shown to be compatible with paper resources. Right?
Why, why keep the words low impact if nobody here can define it?
Yeah, what's high impact? If there's low impact, there must be high.
Four seasons?
I don't, well, maybe. I don't know. I don't know. Uh, to me, I would guess, since this is fundamentally a rural residential use. To me, it would be more about. Not necessarily what the activity is, but. What kind of volume or people it generates.
Yeah. Okay, so let's, let's put recreation and commercial uses. Maybe conditionally permitted if shown to be compatible with neighboring uses.
Agreed.
When you have low impact, that's bicycles, people riding bikes. When you have a high impact. Look at Upper Pack River when they're ri- riding their. Side by sides and their motorcycles up there. And I mean, those would be, yes.
So when I saw.
You're thinking noise.
Oh, yes.
So when I saw the reference to.
Finding issue.
Yes.
I saw the reference to wastewater and I assumed low impact meant not as many people. She didn't have to worry about public toilets, for example. You could get by with. A tree or just one single outhouse.
Impact from the day.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. I, I think we beat this up there. I think that's, that's.
Well, yeah, it's special since we have five hundred and four to go through. A lot of open out comments on this entire.
Yeah, but we may be addressing some of those comments by the way.
Yeah. We may have.
There, I mean, some of the comments deal with specific. Cars. Courses. Which we can deal with. I've, I've written a lot of those down. This is more. Alright, okay. So we done with this? Road residential? Ag forest?
You know, around, around egg porch, okay?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see the reason putting fire force isn't very viable agricultural experience.
I think that was part of the reason. The last thing I see where's the non-agriculture uses should be limited to those related to forestry or agriculture. Well. If it's a non-agriculture use. Is, is not gonna be really forced with agriculture, a hundred percent. I, I like, I like to work compatible.
Well, so what do we consider a? Farm stand? Is that a commercial use or agricultural use?
I'd say that's related to agriculture.
Well, it is obviously. But, or compatible. Maybe it's a big farm stand. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we leave the, uh, that sentence the way it is. Was compatible with, compatible with.
Yeah.
We'll say forestry, we can put a forest in there, but. Compatible with.
Uh. Actually, a non-agricultural use. Could be one of those lots where they put up a house and they not doing anything forestry or ag. That's a non-agricultural use. They like to live there because it's an agricultural area, but they're not doing anything with that. They not even have a little plot or.
Is that compatible?
Is it? Sure does seem like it. Sure is, must be. An awful lot of people live out there that don't have farms. Awful lot of people.
Um, so we have the same issue here that we had with the other paragraph where we talked about uses in a couple of different places in the paragraph. And so a little bit further down. Well, I guess David. In red, commercial endeavors should be limited for those who will not impact neighboring properties.
And further down, we get down to residential uses now, even.
Yeah, but.
I would take out, I, I think an episode. Soil soils, I would take that out. Um, personal endeavors. I would say commercially uses. You know, all the commercial uses should be conditionally permitted if they will not impact neighboring properties of areas of it.
Well, and I, I'm looking back at fire at the residential language that's, that's used in there. Uh, which shows most users may be conditionally permitted, trying to be compatible with neighboring uses. That sentence right there should actually. Taken place in that energy endeavor.
Yes.
Saving system.
Yes.
That last sentence. He has some comments about, uh. Financial burden. So we've got this, we've got the language in here about minor collector roads and the existence of such standard roads.
Yeah, I know. So we gotta make it compatible, make it.
Just same sentence as the one in rural residential.
But then it goes on, residential uses are generally limited to low densities to support these primaries. And that's a decent statement. That's more of it.
Well, let's, let's stay on this one sentence. Do, are we, do we have a problem with the minor collector roads? I, I think it, you know, the way it is is worded. To say, and the existence of such standard roads is. Best leading, we've gotten that comment a couple of times.
It's almost like you have to live on a subsstandard rather than others.
Doesn't have to be some standard.
Yeah. I think we should, I, I agree with Eric's suggestion a moment ago, that we should use the language that we used in the primary, the other paragraph.
Consistency bits though.
Yeah.
That's real, yeah.
So what would it say?
The same. Paragraph above. Some sort of bar, so it says.
What should be, what should be existing infrastructure? Now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You got that, Jay? So. The, the, the suggested language here that back to commercial endeavors is gonna be changed to, what's it like you have?
Uh, quite a use of maybe conditionally permitted, trying to be compatible with the mobile uses. But, me, there's language.
Yeah, he's got that already upstairs as well. Same, same language as.
And then when we, when you go down to, uh. Allowable density is related to adequate access to.
He's looking out.
I'm not sure that language fits here.
He's already changed it.
Oh, and we did?
To your recommendation.
However, these areas are very, you know, just very effective.
So what exactly does that mean?
Don't know, we, we discuss this many times, I won't. I'll work as much as I can. Me, it's a quarter section. Is someone maybe ten, maybe five?
Well, if it's a quarter.
Piece of property.
It's a minimum of ten, either ten or eleven. One more. This is ten. Right, so. I can't read those, so maybe changes.
Yeah, there's, we're caught up. Jake's caught up with us.
Alright.
We're going on to comment number two? We're, oh, we got five hundred and four to go.
Okay. So we are going to eliminate, we're not gonna discuss any of the, any of the ones that deal with. A lot of front lines.
I do have a couple on that, Alan. A lot of those waterfront lots also there, a lot of promised land, cook law leak, gunning and changing a lot of that to rec as well. I wonder if we should just leave that as, it's all suburban right now, just leave suburban there. I don't, I don't know if some of these people understand that suburban zone actually allows a ten thousand square foot lot person, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we wanna change that.
You want we, the law leak and right.
Well, the, the, the issue with the rec designation is the concern that allows commercial money.
Ending.
Well, they, yeah, all of them, even rural five, ag ten, and many of the little people's statements, you're all the industrial, commercial, commercial, I don't think you success rooms. All those, there are so many. I, I wrote a mountain, a little forty. And a rural five. And so when those people up in pre-slate, we want to get alone, you want to be in rural five or rag ten. They aren't looking at those. You know, everything from cemeteries, airports, she will know plants, uh. Wood process and slaughter of houses. Those are all conditionally, those all. But everybody was up there was all fused on a marine. Don't remember. Don't know if I, don't wanna see high rise.
I, I'd say, let's just leave it there.
Cause there's this other, you know, they say if we, if we open the door to other areas that were three or four other areas not counted with same. Reclassification, reclassification.
Well, there were some, there were some. We did, yes, and there was somebody that suggested that. Maybe we should change, we should change the. Free sake area to suburban, but that's even worse.
Yeah, that one, that one guy.
No, that's, that's worse. Yeah.
Well, that's where we. Pull out, do we pull out the tires?
Did we finish going through these land use designations?
I think so.
So we're done with that? All those written descriptions?
Well, unless you have some other suggestions.
I, I was curious, did we delete the word resort out of there officially?
Yeah.
Good. I just wanna make sure.
Who's next, Chief?
Well, I, I got a bunch of ones that I wrote down here. Um. Someone I don't understand, if you go to comment thirty-five.
Rick M's comment?
Yeah, I mean, uh. This area has been twenty acres and that was fought long apart. I. I don't know, I'm not sure what's, what this even means. It's ten to twenty, it's not a max, it's a minimum. And I, you know, this, this isn't, we don't, we didn't put the zoning. Designations, this is a land use designation. I don't know, it's either ten or twenty from a zoning standpoint. That's the highest one we have, remote. Unless he's saying, unless he's saying that it's remote.
He's on the left side of fifty-seven, Matt, the big old chunk of land he highlights. Just west of fifty-seven, halfway between pre-street and pre-street lane.
What did we, what did we, we, we say it was remote?
I, I looked it up too and I couldn't identify because he, he highlighted such a large area. I couldn't figure out where he was talking about.
I mean, that's one, that's one very.
I think, um. Now Jake, you're, you said, you see what he's doing here? So, he's apparently. I understand what he's saying here. Somehow. He designated this was remote, which if we did, that was a mistake, should be ag close.
And what's the comment number?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five and thirty-six. Cause remote forest is supposed to be government property. Excuse me, that, that seems to be the, be the gist of his, his comment was. That we, we changed it from ag forest to remote ag forest and we didn't, that wasn't. That we we changed it from ag forest to remote ag forest, and we didn't, that wasn't intentional, but that's, that's what the map shows. Should we remain ag forest? Looks like that's what happened.
Mm hmm.
In the back, it's in the arrow piece that you're talking about. That one.
This whole area, this whole thing. It's all very. We didn't, we didn't intentionally do that, we must have thought it was. Stayed by.
Okay, but that one down low, double rectangle.
This one, yeah. It looks like it's. Look at thirty five and thirty six. It's the same comment. Based on my reading of this, it should be ag forest. He's saying it should be ag forest, but somehow he's he's thinking that it's remote. Ag forest.
Well, I I I think, I think you get to read his comment a little more carefully, was that prime ag forest before? And that's a designation we've eliminated. And that's what he's objecting to.
Yeah, that's.
If I interpret his comment correctly, because we have that as prime ag forest, which is minimum of twenty acres. And and he's objecting to us changing it to forestry, which are act, ag forest, which theoretically would allow ten, although I would probably suggest if that was prime ag before. It's probably going to be AF twenty. And so it's probably kind of really not much changed. That's the way I, that's the way I interpret, because he says, I'm opposed to changing prime ag twenty plus acres to forestry ten to twenty. Now, we did have a prime ag designation before, which was a minimum, was twenty acres was, it wasn't twenty plus, well, it was more than twenty, but twenty was the minimum. There was nothing other than twenty acre zoning. Although it was AF twenty. It's the same AF twenty as existed in an ag forest designation where it was twenty acre zoning, they both were AF twenty.
A little misunderstanding.
Well.
Well, no, this is like, we had a zone change up off the bear pile, some years ago that turned, it got really, really, I know the the folks there really concerned about.
Yeah.
Increasing density, so.
I mean, I think it it seems to me this is really going to, this should be a change that amounts to nothing. Because if it was prime ag before. And it's AF ag forest now, but if it was prime ag before, based on the way we're changing over, it's going to end up being AF twenty zoning, which is what it was before. Cause there was no prime AF twenty zoning. It was only AF twenty.
Yes, right.
So it's, it, I don't, I mean, I.
Oh, you could, can you pull a zoning up?
I don't know how to, this is one of those ones where I'm not sure how to address it. He's got, I'm going to write those down.
You just have this explanation.
Yeah.
And then, uh. But we got that, and also if you comment, look at thirty four, that's Mr. Hyde.
Yeah, it looks like it was changed.
Taking one zoning in the same area?
Yeah.
Zoning is AF twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what we did is correct.
I, you guys combined the these designations, we used to have ten, now we have six, right? So that's one that got combined into ag forest, that's what Mr. Frank had brought up saying.
This piece right here. That's Mr. Hyings. And like he said, why isn't he in the egg twenty? It's, he's like, no, I know some. And.
Oh, yeah.
I think we got maybe put on egg twenty.
This one here. Okay.
That whole, that whole, yeah.
Not just, did we change? Didn't we change that?
They did.
That's a, that's a trouble.
He just did. Well, it was, it was previous. Forest forty, but it probably well, so it was not a timber branch, or that would be a property, that's the question.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Those were easy. Then thirty seven. Another one. And that is showing. Rural residential and they're actually asking, why is this not ag forest? I think this was something that had been changed some time ago.
So it looks like parcels that were already broken down for development. Subdivision. She's wondering why those are rural residential.
Oh, yeah, I remember that, we we discussed that.
Yeah, but I think that was a zone, a zone that way, right? I mean, that's just the answer to that. So is she talking about that block or?
Yeah.
Eight properties.
Yep, just wondering why those would change, but it would be.
I think that was an approved subdivision.
Right now, that whole area is, is. Uh, rural residential, it looks like a lot of it's being changed minus that one subdivision. To add for us, probably because the zoning aligns, um, there's probably our ten zone. But those are five acre pieces.
Yeah.
Not on a major minor or tier.
They have a single rooted.
That is a major collector.
It is?
It's a major collector.
East side? Yeah, east side room.
That's why it's purple colored right here.
All right, so, um. My next comment is a comment forty seven. Which is forty seven, forty eight, fifty, fifty one, fifty two. Something else. All deals with.
That looks like the industrial right side, pre-street.
No, that's, that's, uh.
This is.
Oh, that's right, sir. So the first comment at forty seven with Kyle, I I call it burger? Is that you?
No.
Oh. I don't know, what's the status of that, Ben?
So.
So we've got, we've got a whole bunch of comments.
Right, so, um.
Jeff Kyle.
The board accounting commissioners, um, had requested additional information. Um, and we felt that the information we did have was probably overwhelming, that was one of the reasons why we decided to withdraw our application. And so they could have time to review the PUD in its entirety. Because ultimately the code requires us to get the comp plan change, the zone change, and then we can come into our PUD amendment. Unfortunately, they want to see what that PUD amendment is going to look like, so we've been spending the past few months. Cobbling that together to present that in a workshop to the commissioners on the seventeenth of March.
So it's going to be presented to them in March? This month, correct?
Hi, I'm Lance Badger, um, Schweitzer Mountain Properties, um, just to add to what Daniel's been saying. March seventeenth, we have a workshop with the county commissioners, it's really just to bring them up to speed on. The history of Schweitzer, the current planning efforts, uh, the current activity up there. There's a lot that's happened over the last thirty plus years, and, um, and we've got two new commissioners, um. And Asia had asked commissioner, um. Had asked for, oh. More information about Schweitzer. So. We decided to do the workshop, and I think that will help enlighten everybody as to. What was done in the past to set the vision in place, to set the zoning in place, and to where it is today. We do intend to come back in and and, um. Showcase the the master plan at some point, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done on, um, a lot of work has already been done. Um, but everything that we've been working on is to, uh, try and articulate. What that looks like, what the approvals are in place for. We don't want to change the zoning, or change the approvals, we just want to make sure that it's all consistent between the P D. The zoning map, the comp plan, and the master plan that that, um. All be real.
I understand all these comments, I think they're all kind of related to that parcel that you wanted to talk about back then on. You know, few months or weeks ago.
Well, if you go, if the ninety six seventy eight resolution. Has a boundary drawn on it, and it shows exactly where the Schweitzer P U D boundary is in the expansion area. And so that was part of, that's all we were doing, was just, um, bringing that map in. And trying to match the 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 zoning map and the comprehensive plan to match that ninety six seventy eight. Resolution, that's it.
So my, my concern.
It was also.
Go ahead.
It was also to clean up some mapping errors that had taken place on some previous approvals that took place in the eighties. So sort of the mo, the comp plan maps off, it's split as well as the zoning. So part of that application was to help clean all that up and to bring that future expansion piece in to the P U D.
So my concern is, I understand the issue, I think, um. I don't know that we should handle it in the comp plan amendment, it was comp plan redo. When it's wrong, when the, when the exact issue was part of the county provisions.
It's not in front of the county commissioners in longer, we had withdrawn those applications, so there's not an active file currently.
That's one of the downs to.
I'm sorry, Don, I'm not sure what parcel you're talking about.
It was, I think it was the parcel that was subject of the land you smiled, it was off the table. There you go.
Now.
So the piece closest to ninety five there. If I may. So currently, this should have been zoned as Alpine Village and Compline, the Alpine Community, um, because those designations were from nineteen eighty three. Um, this is also split here, and this was also a piece that was part of that proposal. So we included this piece, this piece. This here, and then to clean up this and that.
Is that one parcel split zone currently?
So this is split here, this area, because this is, uh, that section that was. Back in eighty three, and then this is split between the zoning and the comp plan as well.
What about the one to provide about?
This one, so right, that was part of our proposal that we brought forth in front of the planning commission, and got a recommendation.
That is not part of the original.
So at not part of the original P U D, but it was, um, established thirty five years ago, thirty four. As being a future expansion area.
Identified where?
Oh, I'm correct.
Who's master plan?
Schweitzer's.
Okay, the county has to acknowledge that necessarily.
Uh, that's all part of county record, has been for thirty five years.
So there was a, there was a comprehensive plan that acknowledged. That land use designation that matched what Schweitzer's master plan?
Not the, not the, not the counties, so it was all part of the the plan, the county, obviously, the comp plan has been. Adopted a couple of times, and here we are around three, so I'm not sure what the county's intentions were back then. But that's what we're looking for is the county's intentions now.
I just wanted to understand, the county has not in any of its previous plans. Designated the land. Match what your master plan is.
With the P U D. Where.
Correct.
Come out, they're comprehensive.
Right, what conversations took place. Decades ago, who knows? But when they updated the comp plan in two thousand. Five, they should have included this piece, they should have cleaned this up, and then the same thing in two thousand eight, when they did the zoning. They had the opportunity to clean that up, because this was already approved by the, uh, board of county commissioners back in the eighties and the nineties as well.
So what? So, so other than the splits on. Well, what you ask, what you asked for before planning commissioner, and I think we have, we approved it.
You recommended approval for this piece here. Cleaning up this, well, let's leave that out, commissioner, because that's what you said, and then this piece here, this piece is not owned by Altera nor S N P Properties.
What's that?
And then this is the fire station piece, um. Yeah. No, we're not dealing with that, so the way it's outlined, this was part of our proposal here. To change this comp, this, to bring this into the current comp plan of the Alpine community.
Is that part of the original? P U D?
No.
So. And that's, then that's not split zone with it.
It is not currently. Right.
Well. That's a counter as well.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's still, because there was no follow up, comp plan amendment. Well, they probably said, okay, well, that'll happen when the whole thing happens. You know, the whole, that piece. But that one, the H and the rectangle up here. Were therefore to stand on their own. Which is why you put in the.
Correct, yes, so included the stuff they needed to clean up, the stuff that, um, was proposed thirty five years ago to be the future expansion area of the P U D. Those were identified.
You correct, if I'm. Right here, Jake, on a P U D. You necessarily have to do a confidence of plan change on or P U D. There are few reasons to follow it, then we need to tell them. Okay, so actually, generally, we're done with this one. Well, you know, in in my opinion. The the smaller parcels to the south is actually up the ridge, which is, it's, it's two or three? Yeah, those three. Um. I think those should be. And 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 the one that splits on. On the one.
So the the resolution to get back to what you're saying, commissioner, did include this piece here. For the rec zone when they did that back in the late nineties. However, this was adopted as part of the rec zone, you read the legal description.
Well, the future expansion area, I'm not sure. We've, we've made a recommendation.
Right, you recommended approval on that.
So really the question before us now is whether or not we change the map. When we know the county commissioners have an issue that they're trying to resolve.
No, there, there was, i- i- if you'd call it an issue as much as they were just. It's an opportunity to educate them on the entire P U D. I mean, all those commissioners and a lot of people in this room were transplants and weren't around, myself included. When all this came to fruition back in the eighties. And when Schweitzer became Schweitzer in the sixty-three, I believe. Matt can help me out with that. Right.
I I guess I would feel comfortable in. In changing the split, all the splits on it, parcels. And and those three. Yeah, this one is one property. This is a separate property. Well, that one and also in personal that's pill shaped. I think, I think we can just lay bones, you know, obviously it's going to be approved. We can recommend that. So what would that include? So that one, so like the laying down and all there. Along the stairs there, yeah, what's that, is that one?
This is actually, Schweitzer sold this to the city uh, for the watershed to protect the watershed. Um, I believe about eleven, twelve years ago. No, and that's, this is city-owned. I believe this is government and this is government as well.
Okay, so the three stair step lots and the L-shaped lots of the.
Correct.
Yeah, we could do that. Can we do that, guys?
So part of that proposal as well is the fire station up there. The, this is, all this was identified, with the exception of this piece, all this was identified as a future expansion area. And that was also part of our proposal that we had brought forward. I think it's at the boneyard because it's now creekside. No, I hear what you're saying, Dave. I do. So chair two is coming down. I know you like doing that to me, but you're killing me. So musical chairs comes right in here. No, not chair two. It'd be nice to see, that's, that's the future road. So where the roundabout, the roundabout's right about here. The future comes in here to what's going to be the new parking lot. Right, so the, the new parking lot sits approximately right here and then the new chairlift goes down to the parking lot.
What do you guys want to do with that?
I would change it.
Yeah, and then I think so you don't spot negatively spots on that little guy there too, that little one. The fire station for sure, but the other one that Schweitzer does not own. We'd be leaving an island out there. Alright, so we're gonna do that, we'll do that. And the fire station.
They're all commissioners.
So there's been, you know, there's a lot of conversation uh, in some of these. Some of these uh. Comments saying that somehow we've eliminated the. The zoning and the design standards and all that. You guys, you guys realize we didn't do that, right? We didn't change the zoning. Yeah, we've gotten a number of comments that seem to indicate that people think we eliminated the zoning on the Alpine Village, which we didn't do. Well, if somebody asks you, just tell them, we didn't do that. Well, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of comments that confuse zoning and and uh, land use designations.
But I think when you, when the planning commission combined the Alpine and the rec designations. You fully intended to leave the zones separate. And keep the Alpine village zone and then have a rec zone.
And whatever design standards go with the Alpine. Which includes the geotech. Alright, so that actually eliminated quite a few. Well, next one I have is uh. I had fifty-five if you pull that out. Comment was that the little triangular piece there. Should have uh, should be. This rural residential eliminated about the. It should be something that that allows a rural service center. So what we could do is we could make that mix. Seems that they have criteria, it's on, it's Jason to ninety-five. Well, it's just, it's just a triangle. But the principle was. Now, is that? Is that really residential property or should it be? Something else more of a commercial. Because of where it sits. Desirable residential property. I think for sure that that should be next to us.
One of the questions I had, Alan. Was he says that he owns that parcel. When I looked it up. The county shows different owner. I wasn't sure if I'm looking at the wrong thing. Jake, you're the expert. Does that ownership show the same name as the comment made claiming ownership? I should look Doug. Nedlingham. He didn't, that's not the, you know, that's a different one. He put the comment in the wrong lot, I think.
Those are neat, Jonathan Lemon. Well, that may be what he was talking about. Yeah, I think it is. There was that one, there's another, there's two or three of them that are together, not all in that same ownership. It's the same, same. There's a.
Looks like Mr. Lemon owns this piece.
Residential? Gas line and the problem.
Current zoning there is R five. Looks like we do have a split zone and split designated area here at the bottom. Uh, this owned by Mr. Ford.
Well, why don't we, why don't we change that one to uh, next year's?
Just this little piece?
Just that one by itself. Well, I don't know, it's all around there, is that a little. Looks like it's a commercial.
Are we gonna change, are we gonna go through and change individual parcels as part of this exercise?
Well, I mean.
If they're split zone, maybe.
I mean, the difference with Schweitzer stuff, that was a block and so forth. Here you got one parcel all by itself. That's why I was saying, what about the other parcels that were similar nature to the south, which we never owned the highway? Why are there residential? Doesn't seem like that's. Even minimal residential property. I've lived next to railroad. Well, if you like, if you, if you look at, there's a whole bunch of properties that are walk, well, right along ninety-five. Yeah. Where they say that really, because they're right along ninety-five. They ought to be. Rural residential. Well, and there are that. Sixty-one through. And what parcels would they describe it? Go to sixty-one, you'll see. Cause that, I mean, that down there where it's already happening, it's already lost its drive and they're, they're built on. But some of them just, again, they're, they're so small.
Sixty-one's a huge chunk.
Yeah. That's that big one. Oh, yeah, that's the guy saying, well, these are good residential. Cause they're no close proximity. They're on ninety-five. So it's the same guy as sixty-one, sixty-two. Sixty, sixty-three is the same. Oh, I'm, yeah. So sixty-one through. Sixty-nine, deal with the same issue. The same comments about the fives. Yeah, and they're all, they're all right there together and it makes sense. It meets a number of the criteria for our five versus. There is that, oh, I know where we're at now. Okay, yeah, you know, just today I was both curious about that, but we've been through those comments again. I pulled up the rows up and hit this shoot. They're not a thirty-fourth and a sixty gallon man. That's, and we're all, all of our hundred and thirty-eight to a hundred and forty. Amazing. Just that there's a blue square there and just to the west of that, that's where those student wells are. Yeah, so it's right. Well, and you can deal with those access, you have to get over there, going eastwards. So the address is the concern about, you know. There's a whole bunch of, so I, I don't know if you can pull, you can pull it all up. All pretty much the same. So we've been. Right along the highway and then pushing down the highway. Down to where the vet center road is. In the south of them. That whole area of. Due to its location could be. Well, that, what they're saying is it should be rural as a. Yeah, and these maps, I noticed some zone changes happened about a month ago, then we're gonna need a map.
So before we like finalize this, I'll have um, the. I'll have the G I S departments uh, update this and make sure that we're not re-designating something that we. So make sure not, something not getting ag forced that we've recently changed to a rule, uh, R five, for example.
So, so this is the area that he's talking about. Due to his proximity and the water situation, everything else, that's fine. If this was, he just needed to residential. What about this? Looks like it already is. Well, it's smaller lots for sure, but it's, it's at first. I know, but it was probably a real time before. Yeah, probably. Well, it's uh, that was ag. So what do you want to do, ag? The whole area, yeah. We talked at one time about, you know, with proximity to ninety-five.
What, what is it zoned at right now? Is it R tens?
Yeah, no egg.
So. But.
Well, I don't know, is that the zone?
Then, no, I would leave it as egg ten. I wouldn't let him. He can try to. Coming in and.
Yeah, it's, it's not just one owner either. You have our physics comments in there.
Where, where does it stop though? If we allow this.
I hear you.
It, it's just gonna, it, it, it festers and next thing you know, it's going across.
Well, but we're, we're looking at these other areas too, where we're talking about these roads and final access and things like that. And what the points mean rest need rest. Then we, then we're shown an area that has the water capacity. Has the access proximity to highway. We have to consider that as well.
I agree with Peter. Why are we voluntarily never get these straight up zoning? Why not wait until it's requirement? Why are we just going in there and just paintbrushing that before it's necessary? Consistent comment we got back was we don't want more density, whether it's a priest lake or. Across the county, it was a consistent comment. So why would we go in here and just start arbitrar- not arbitrarish, people, I shouldn't use that word. Why would we go in there and start up zoning? Before it's necessary.
So one question, Peter, how familiar are you with those, with that area? Because those are large parcels, they're obviously have been used for ag purposes.
Those are the same, the sandlot across from the county down.
Yeah.
Is it? Feasible egg game as a, as a farmer? No, because it's sand.
So.
But.
It doesn't.
If we allow this. That's what people use against. The county all the time is my neighbor did this, I want to do it. And and that, that every right of they do throughout Bonner County. They take ten acres and chop them to five acres when. Because my neighbor did it.
Yeah, and look at right there. Short veterans. Did you guys see those property lines rainbow? That's already chopped though.
Correct, those. Were those um, prior to two thousand eight? So if we're trying to stay within the standards and be conforming, then.
They're not in the same area.
And they have, they'll be never going up. Oh, that's why these didn't show. These are already broken up.
Yes.
Well, by, by. Yeah, well, by by what was it? I don't know what that is. That is better for them. Now, I'm not a developer, but it's this. This is transportation, that's the kids.
How do you say? I don't know that.
So you got that existing. These are already, but it depends.
Yeah.
These are already tens. These little ones up here, that's the old Swedish thing, or you know, you do. And we. Um. Some out here, they're already smaller, but the rest of them are larger. I think that's why we said before, keep it that way. Down here, there's more smaller ones. Just a little on clay and small. Brown road.
The other. Factor that probably should be considered is the desire of the selling sub area plan to keep everything minimum of ten.
Yeah.
And and the same proximity to ninety-five argument. Works also in terms of thinking about where it should be ten and where it should be twenty.
Yeah.
So I would certainly argue that this, when we get to zoning, should be AF ten and not AF twenty. Um. I don't know about. About five at this point.
Okay. See, even though they're par five, they're partially out there. Which one before?
Right.
Maybe.
Yeah, we had some comments. That's fine. We could move on. So.
I I do have one question for you. Uh, one of those people who made that comment that they want to change, I talked to him, he asked him to take the public comments, and I told him, oh, but those are. And I'm.
Oh, actually says.
Comments, so I.
There is public comment on each other.
Pardon?
There is public comment.
No, but the comment on the fall, on the comment, but during the, yeah.
No, the comment, yeah.
And so I guess my my comment on that would be. Let them know, those people that they can make public comment. And they can discuss it.
Sure, they can, they can come back and talk to us next week.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not submitting this to the county next week, so. They're perfectly welcome to come here and talk about it.
Yeah, there've been a couple of, there's one guy out in that, they had a comment on that, but there's a couple of people. Asked me today, are we allowing public comment in this workshop? Not public comment, but. The discussion, I really do any discussion, and I told him, no, it says it's supposed to be public comment, so.
Well, yeah, we're telling them to come next time. Oh, okay, we had a comment.
So I'm sorry, Alan, before you go on, so next week you're gonna update the agenda so it will allow public comment during the discussion phase? Or you're gonna allow public comment at the beginning of the meeting like you did tonight?
I prefer it at the beginning of the meeting, but we have people show up and shut them off.
I just wanted to be clear so that Matt knows what to pass on.
During that discussion.
Check out the closing public comment. We'll be um. Anybody that's watched our meetings know that we'll we'll we accept comments. Um, okay, so. There's a comments about the pack river store that should be. Should recognize the use. I don't know whether I might view that or not. You know, obviously, it's an agricultural use. That's probably his.
It's very well in that non-comfulminous discussion. It's there. It's all built in limitations, people know it. No question, it's non-comfulminous, it has to conform to those rules. Well, it's nine.
Yeah.
It's one thing, and but if it was next to join in something that's already. Or leave potential area four. I keep remembering neighborhood, but it isn't, it is. What's there is fine, it's accepted, it works. Nothing. But we wouldn't want to see another one on the side of the road or down at the intersection. The side of the river.
All right, so um. This. So eighty-three is a comment by Jeremy Grimm. I don't think it is capacity as mayor. Capacity is. Damage to the way of this guy. It's a parcel, it's like it's next to. I think that's completely right. Yeah. As we say.
See, his comment goes against what many of the other planning representatives of the city said, which means keep those areas adjacent to us lower density. So there's a rationale eventually for annexing if we want to. If you go ahead and make it higher density and they all, those lots get developed and. They have septic systems or whatever, then they're they're not going to be motivated to be annexed at all.
So so Sead himself has said that they're.
Studying. Yeah.
And now we start our natural.
Yeah, I think you adore that.
That was his mayor. That was his mayor.
I didn't figure out which had his worries.
So I have a lot of respect for Jeremy. I'm just kidding.
Um, so is that currently zoned or proposed to be ag ten?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ag, I should say.
Yeah.
And the the suggestion is that it goes to what? Rockville? Or that'd be.
Well, he didn't, he didn't really say.
Say.
He just said higher density. He didn't really say.
What, where's the uh?
Comment is number sixty, oh, number eighty-three.
It should be higher density residential in this area, is what he's suggesting.
And from five to one half of the. The German.
Okay, well, I don't have any heartburn, he would say.
Good.
Um. We had a bunch of comments um. No, go to one twenty-three.
The Weimers.
He.
I don't know. And his wife, we did a lot of comments about the same issue.
I think they own quite a good one, man.
Yeah.
Trying to see exactly where we're at there.
Think I counted ten or twelve.
This is, this is Dave's favorite area, Bottle Bay Road.
Well, this is actually to the east of Bottle Bay.
Um.
Is that the rectangle where they're? And I think we left, we left that ag forest for a reason.
And that that road is even worse than Bottle Bay.
So would you say this is in proximity to?
Um, I mean, these two parcels, I haven't looked at, I don't remember. I've looked at all these comments, but I don't remember what all these comments were. These two particular parcels aren't too far from Bottle Bay. Um. But yeah, that, I I'm not sure, but is that called East Bottle Bay or under?
Yeah.
Just Bottle Bay and then.
I mean, that road is.
East Bottle Bay Road goes along the lake, but then the one that goes up, it's got a a road marker that says East Bottle Bay, but it's not. It's actually the the end of Eureka. And it's private. It it, you don't know it's not private? Yes, it is. Private road. And the Weimers have allowed it to be used. Yeah, I'm taking up the next up. Anyway. Plus, that is mountainside.
Yeah, it is pretty steep.
Mountainside, I feel like that thing, that's keepable. Um, that goes up, that must be six hundred feet elevation difference between the beginning and the end of that road.
He says, he says there's access sewer access up there?
Yeah. Um, well. That may be in the Bottle Bay's. But I don't think it's actually served. Okay.
Yeah, he references a Bottle Bay water and sewer.
I'm gonna turn on the district level and see if it is, but I. Oh, isn't it? I'm trying to think, trying to figure out which piece it is exactly. On here that we're looking at guys. This comes up here. Look, I do do. Yeah, he's adjacent to it. There you go. There's none of people ages. And that, I think they're just like one of the. You know, you have to, that's another, then we'll see. Yeah. How how accurate these taxing district now, because I found. I found one down in Sagaria that that is served. But it's doesn't, it's not reflected on the taxing.
Well. These come from the state tax commission, so. They're usually accurate, but I know GIS has found a number of properties that say they're county and they have like a a property number in a city limit, so.
Sure.
They have to fix them. Um, but it also doesn't mean that they extended, you know, water services something outside their their district.
District, they're not served.
Yeah, or the other way around, it might be served in outside the district. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, I that's, I know where this data comes from is a state tax pressure. And GIS is putting a memo together to to give like a a summary of all the uh, all the layers as to where they come from, where the data comes from. So it'll help answer these kind of questions if they're proper.
All right, so what do we want to do with this?
What are they trying to make it on five or?
Yeah. Rural residential.
Yeah. Well, it's it's a, no, okay, the number was too probably. It's the. Yes, you can build it there, but it just doesn't. Oh, I see why I probably asked for it, because it's probably uh. Off that road. Yeah, change it.
Oh, because it was a roll too.
It is a work now, now, always. Yeah, probably yes.
So it would be, would be active.
It would be AF ten.
Yeah.
So it actually probably isn't gonna get up, sorry.
So this is another, I'm not sure what he wants, what he wants to keep the current well or definitely well.
He specifically says that, yeah.
Well.
Don't upzone us.
Under the idea that the R ten is going away, so if you leave it as rural residential automatically then it's R five.
Yeah.
But I think changing it from rural residential ten to AF ten is essentially no change. We changed the name, but. Valuable uses are the same, density is the same.
Yeah, well, the difference is that if you wanted to, if now that he's ag forest. Difference is if he wants to go to a five acres, he would have to get front line amendment. And is. Where's the rural residential?
You could go back to my original.
All right, we'll leave it the way it is.
Yeah. Did, I know you guys discussed this sliver piece. Did you guys decide on what to do? You kind of. Debated a little bit and then you guys moved on. Leave it the way it is.
Leave it, yeah, I'm gonna have a mixture.
Yeah, next year, some people think, I mean, but.
Now, this was before that conversation.
No, we'd leave it as it is, as what was decided.
Oh, I heard leave, leave it as a. Yeah.
That.
That little piece. They got, the gentleman, I think, wanted to change it to mixed use.
To me, that's appropriate for this.
I agree.
Okay.
It is, the only question is, it's a standalone.
Yeah, do you want to change anything to the south? It was kind of discussed and then you guys jumped topics, so. Hate to hate to backtrack a little bit, but I want to make sure I give clear guidance to GIS when updating.
It seems logical to at least include the piece to the south, because it also has a gas line to part of the line across it between the railroad and the highway. It is not for residential portion. There's nothing on a residential mountain.
This here, looks like drainage.
All right, so I had, there's, I had this one, it's very confusing comment, one twenty-one, we didn't answer the question.
You guys did it again. Yes or no? Those two?
Yes.
Those two properties, okay. And while we're here, I noticed the a a split designated and split zone. I want to make sure you guys are fine with this going to a ag forest. Does this? It's split between R five and R ten.
Well, like, you know, I thought you went on R five.
The majority of it is in R ten. That's why I'm asking.
You know, but.
It should be ag ten.
That that's what I put it as, is that is ag forest, only by the majority will, but if you guys want to give me other direction to change it to rural residential.
Last week, I had a comment. That that Bill had said splits on parcel. We should probably go to the more of this.
It's usually the majority is what we've been using, but.
All that stuff, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. I'll leave it up to you guys.
What's the majority?
Well, the majority would is in R ten right now. It looks like it's a twenty-eight piece. So. Okay. That's what I have written down. I just wanted to get confirmation from the. Yeah, sure.
So one twenty-one, I wanted to address this because I'm sure it's gonna be addressed before the category was. Jennifer Rainer. And that part of this very confusing, she she is complaining that. We changed something that was designated urban. To recreational resorts. She thinks that's a part of it. And that that will walk for an uncertain zones suburban. That's what, that must be what she means.
Well, you had an urban designation that you've combined into suburban and then you expanded.
The old urban. It was an old urban growth designation.
Correct.
But there was no zoning.
Correct.
Um. So we eliminated urban growth. So this, apparently this is suburban now. And she thinks that's better than recreation.
It looks like.
They make it suburban. They can go down to a ten thousand.
So this was urban, see the red, or yeah, this is the urban designation under that dark red.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you followed the line of the sewer district, same with the upland side here where it was been zoned. Or it was designated, I think, rural residential. Yeah, see how it changed to. To suburban, and then you followed the same property or those, man, it's getting away, guys. District boundaries and made it um.
People, zoning, zoning was always red, right?
I don't know. I don't believe so. I think the zoning.
Wasn't that zoning, that you had up there, the red?
No, that's the urban designation.
It's. Other than highway forty-one. Uh.
Yes, it looks like it is zoned suburban. Minus the piece up here, this area. Yep.
So I think this may be another case of. Using that resort term. Well, the thing is with resort, I've seen a couple of people gaming, and the last game, I think Susan. Had a comment as well, that those red theory, the red designations, you're going areas where we have uh. You know, something on boat launch at restaurants. Some kind of.
That's not the way it's been here. So it was, it was normal, it was, it used to be called residential recreation community. Apparently, nobody had a heart heart attack with that. And you you look at the properties at the lake, right, so it's, most of them there, right? Let's say two thirds of Carolina is already there. We're not changing that anything else. We're just not changing anything else to that. Right, but that's, but that's, that's all community, that's all residential. So what's there? There's only two resorts on there. What's their comment? Trying to do? She thinks that that by changing it to re- recre- rural, the recreation. That we have increased the possibility of commercialization. Well. I don't know.
I mean, suburban standards are, that they've all, everybody's objected to the commercialization through a limited. Potentially high rise.
That's suburban, it was confused. Not marinas, but yeah.
Not marinas. It may be twisted around and say that potential, maybe marina, but. Well, I think it was really important, you know, you have, you have a totally boat launch from beach there. In West State. Yeah, in that area, that's the very end of that. That track, and you have forty-one south, it's kind of. Right now, but I'd rather have a marina.
Everything else is just.
I should point out the marinas is in the public use table. It's not even in the commercial use table.
Yeah.
It probably should be though, given the commercialization of it. Yeah.
I did one very, well, don't we forget, I got a date. After he's done talking about this, saying that. Talk about, you know. Yeah, no, it's important, my memory is just.
What do you want to do with this?
You know, I think.
You want to change it back to suburban, right?
Well, except. The not all of them. Because the highway forty one south, that's already very.
I think there's two properties.
Well, any sleeps is also, yeah, you're right, it sleeps.
These two, I had categorized this as just. Leave it alone. Don't change it. Kind of like we just talked about it with. Whatever it was before, don't change it to wreck, just leave it the way it was. Some of it was suburban, some of it was residential.
I'm okay with that. Yeah. Okay.
Are you up now?
Yes, Matt.
Nor- northern lights. I think Chevy, Chevy, you're like this.
Just gonna go to Northern Lights where that was one of the properties that's current, I think currently operating under CUP and the properties adjacent to rural residential.
Right. That was CUP go away.
We talked about Sagal Northern Lights.
Okay, there we go, right there. So that's the topic of discussions in Northern Lights. Because we had the uh gray piece, yeah, we have that as uh. Issues. Uh the family that owns the property around it, they're conservative. So that is North Lights, that's falls under the public. Public utility facilities. Which is not a committed use in the commercial industrial zone, passing along condition permitted, so that conditional use permit will stand given the. And change it to mixed use. I think. I think they should be happy with that.
Yes.
I don't think they realize that I stumbled across it today, you know, in the public news table. So that brings up. Well, I'm thinking. Are we gonna respond back to these comments where we've had these specific discussions? I mean, it feels like we should. Because we're answering the questions, but if they don't. Feel like we've answered them. What's that coming to do? What's going to buck up a public hearing?
Yes, so I thought last.
Nobody listened to us.
I thought last week we decided we were.
It's gonna be a pain in the neck to to respond to all of them or even.
If we we were prepared to respond to them. Well, that's why we're going through these.
I know.
We could say we can respond it.
Yeah.
We review them.
That's letting them know. Specifically them deal, that's that's.
Well, how would we do that?
Well, do it just like you've done in every EIS that's ever been.
Now, we don't have a staff.
I know.
You know, if you have an EIS, you've got to pull. Wrap to consultants or. We don't have, we don't have it, so that's our reason. But. Somehow we gotta.
And it's hard to be full and saying. All the comments of Greece like, we're conceiving have eliminated that that designation.
They know that.
They know it now. We've got lots of comments back. Thank you for being and thank you for listening to us. Thank you for. Public information works, see? But anyway, there there's not a lot of if you go to the south. East. Remember the uh vice file here a few weeks ago? Vice file is up Rocky Road area. Now, Sagal Road, Rocky Road. Miles. Yeah, go ahead and use the. That was right, right, you know. End up. Right.
Go to the east.
Here those curves are, okay. Now, use your cursor up. A section right there to your left. Okay. Yeah, you see that stir set piece there that gets smacked between the two guys? That twenty acre piece on top, right? Okay, one more on that spice, just got to change the. What that's gonna do is we should probably go ahead and change that one little five acre piece below it, but. Do a five also. Otherwise, it's gonna create an island in the wrong direction. Right, yeah. But it's got a destination for Ag Forest. So we change both.
What do you guys bring up?
Oh, there's one more, the very same type of thing. It's gonna be. Oh. To the geese about Cook Law.
When you these green. Yeah, there is.
Oh, nice. And so that's gonna show flowers to you.
Yeah, this is it's live now and new. Okay, we just. From two thousand eighteen to current, they should all be on there, okay?
So moving cursor right, we got right there, just so we I can't see your. You're right, or my right, yeah, and then you see that one little yellow piece or ring over it, oh, you want to call that? That's another one I found today. It's like, why is that an island of? Rural residential to the south was on.
Two or three years ago.
Yeah, right. And that little piece was in there and they came up in that discussion.
Yeah.
You own that? No, we used to, that that pardon the. Is that improved? No, it isn't. So it never got.
So.
So it's just a a happenstance.
Right.
And then I, I don't know. When when I got ahead and took over that area, when we each had our designated areas to look at. Um. Yeah. I couldn't see the red and black squares. I was wondering, it was on after like that. Whatever, we're at. We have.
Can we stay at Coca-Cola for a minute? Because there were a number of comments, maybe not their partners' comments, but there were some about don't designate. The area of Coca-Cola as recreational.
Yeah, and so I don't know. It's worth a discussion, worth a discussion because it's what we've done with the other areas. So what if it was just like what we did?
What how was it? How was it?
Suburban.
Suburban.
How to be changed back? Yeah, it it just, right. There's no, there's no operational difference. Well, right, but but the ones will be look at the lots. The lots that are in there, they're already dinky. The one that. Now red.
That'll make them happy, make it suburban.
I I think it. That was, I don't know, with the majority.
There were, there were a lot of comments. Most of them were that way, yeah.
Okay, leave it that way.
Now, oh, okay. Cross a tree.
Actually, I have, I have a list on the email. They didn't give us the drop yet. They're still working on that, so otherwise I can drop any pins in the comments. So I have this. That's why I'm copying the.
Oh, I see, that's what. Yeah, right up there. Now, if you can, if you do the the slide. On the current uh town plan for that. There you go. All that pink. And if you actually. I've got it painted down. But if you actually look at that without any colors and all. You know, you you have uh. Three marinas. On the other side of the track. You have. Two RV parks on the west side of the track. On the east side of the highway. You have. Two RV parks. One of them splits on. That's currently parked. Wrecked and parked, will drive if I'm not mistaken, yeah, that parking park right there and then RV park to the south of that. Now, if you go ahead and click on your your uh. Your taxing districts. And go to sewer. It's in sewer district, so. Those other comments I I seen from Amy and some people suing someone else and. Those wrecked districts should be are more appropriate unless you have those public, you know, those public. areas and and the commercial zone, we have a. Storage unit. Well, I mean, I'm buried, you have uh homeless task force has their structures in there. I'm just thinking that area over the highway. Between those two RV parks should also be. And I didn't see it because on our other map we had, you know, going back retrospect. Think someone was in a dark red or a dark blue or the areas that I was supposed to cover. I didn't even look at this like that, you know. This this also covers.
So that's exactly what we pick our current proposal map?
Yeah. That's the.
Yeah, listen, you have the you can kind of see the black blocks on them, that's the sewer district.
Yeah.
So what's what's the zoning on that?
Well, the. Service center, but that who like right here. It's like, yeah, two huge RV parts and you have the. Three marinas, that's not difficult. And and it also has a public boat launch and a public beach. There for recreational area. I don't know if to me that area.
That's all part of the Russell Peak Recreation, right?
Yes, that is. On on the waterfront to the north, but that's already, that's already zone red. So we're not changing the zoning on this.
I don't know.
This must have followed like the designation there was wreck before. I bet you the it's an R ten or something like that. Zoning right now.
What what go back Jake, what what is that that you were showing?
So this is the current town plan designation.
Why do we change it?
I'm guessing if you guys followed zoning on that, you probably gave GIS a rule that says if it's R five or R ten, put it here.
Well, if it's currently, if that's current, the current designation, then we should leave it that way.
Oh, on that piece that's in the blue.
Yeah, it's it's zoned R five.
No, what what I'm talking about is is that area.
But that's it's already, it's that's it's currently wrecked. We should leave it that way.
John said we should add. On the on the east side of the highway there, that's between the RV parks. That's also in that sewer district. And they're all smaller than five acre.
What which? Leave leave that one Jake. So which which parcel are you talking about?
No, it's just so first that he's showing right here. Yep, this though. That's stuff right there, though. That's the.
Oh, that's. That was an application that didn't get approved. That shouldn't be on the map. Yeah, it was.
I would say, I would say just leave it the way it currently is. To stay out of the.
Right, okay. What do you want to do with that split zone portion? To it's to the north, to down to rest.
Well, we'll apply the same logic. The majority of it's wrecked, so it should be red. Which one's split zone, Jake?
Yeah, like this little piece, that piece has a little bit of split designation.
And I think also the one to wrestle.
Oh, this piece here. So that one has a designation of R five. And it has zonings. It's the zoning is split. It's that piece right there.
Yeah, so it's.
So I I I think we just applied the logic that. Uh the criteria that Jake's already doing, which is the majority of parcel, that's where it goes.
That whole parcel's in the sewer district.
That doesn't matter because you go back, you go if you go to the lake. Right, I keep going back there, but. All those parcels are in the sewer districts too. And meet all the criteria. Same logic here. Okay, well. I have one other, just little sliver, is that we done that?
Sure.
One little sliver, um I just look. On domain. You go to two oh one. I'm at two oh one. Thank you. So the question is, why is this piece all by itself? I don't know that.
It's at the south end of the Lake Ponderay.
That's just south of uh.
No, 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 no.
You're at the south end of Lake Ponderay.
Oh, that's like, oh, that's the lake. It's only a gas station. Yeah, over there too.
Yeah, but under the logic that we've had, why don't we just leave it on? I mean, it should be something other than the boat. It's apparently surrounded by. Government land.
Right, so it should be Ag Forest?
Could be Ag Forest. I don't know what it was before.
They're implying that it was remote forest, but or no, well, not really. I guess that's not what they say. It's in the middle of the.
That was.
But we should just make it Ag Forest. Okay. I have I have another uh. Uh based on. What we're just talking about in terms of an explanation. Should we provide some? Written general explanations of. Some of these groups of comments that we've got and how we've dealt with them. I'd be willing to do that. I'd be willing to.
I think it'd be good for the record.
I thought at one point we talked about, well, first, the short answer is I agree we should, and I thought at one point we talked about at least providing that to the. EOCC so that they had it and knew how we dispositioned. These comments where they give it. And it's, I think, especially for the groups, like, you know, the comments where we get multiple comments on the same.
I'll I'll take a crack at that.
How many times have we said, I wonder what they did back in two thousand?
Okay, so uh. Jake, what do we have for uh next Tuesday?
On the agenda, I have the land use component and.
Really, we're not done?
I think it's just a lot of. Well, I think it's just a lot of what you guys are doing tonight. Um, I have removed the closed up public comments. I haven't specified if you want to open the public comment and try to elicit more comments during the meeting.
I used to know that you've got that the red line thing or the red.
Yep, so I've removed that from your instruction earlier.
Anyway, though, so. Just leave the public comment. Time and the public comment time. And when we start really working on it.
Well, we get in a situation like we had tonight where we have people, the audience that have made quick comments that like to explore. And I don't. And I don't know that that's just opening up to a free fall workshop, but. You know, this seems to me, obviously, as a result of tonight, we can see that that's.
Yeah, but we we have. I I'm just thinking if they're approved. Round size wise, right? Rather than inviting public, you can certainly. Ask anyone in the Phoenix Mall. Who is moving over. Kind of the same thing, but it gives you a little more control. I mean, he's been very. Good about that with us here and hopefully we're trying to.
That's what we did. Yeah, yeah, that's all. I'm just, just in case.
Playing by the pool, that's a way that you can find a way where you you can certainly just. Or listen. To people who are. Input. That you, you know, have. You know, feel some type of these or. We've had right in the past, you have the workshop. Or or even in a hearing. Even if the testimony exposed the public testimony. If somebody says they've got something pertinent, the chair. Has to avoid the void of permission and we say yes, we continue to go back into the public testimony. We've done that. Our previous workshops, usually though, when we said it's at the discretion of the chair, but uh this particular point. We can take comment to the public, so that's still, I think.
Yeah, I mean, what we've done, I think, throughout. Pretty much. Perfect alliance. But we've. And people have made written comments. And we reviewed them and we want to talk about. Whether that's public comment or not, I guess.
I mean, we can, whatever. Even state. Uh, it's at your discretion as the chair, so you've got a huge discretion. I don't fuck with. This particular one doesn't open it to.
So are we gonna have any kind of file or anything? Which is all this land.
I don't have any land use files for you guys. Um, I do have some code amendments. Um. Nothing really major. I didn't want to present them to you guys till you're done with this, because I don't want to get you off track. Um.
We don't, we don't have to do a little bit.
Yeah, it it's nothing super pressing at the moment. Um, I haven't been directed by the board to process any changes yet, so that might change in the future. We'll see. Um, I have a pretty substantial uh workshop with a lot of items. I'll be publishing the agenda on Thursday. Um. It looks like it's been growing. I don't think. I'll get to everything next week with the board. There'll probably be some things that get tabled. Um. Just kind of a heads up. I'm tracking a bunch of bills. I sent you guys that email. Um, for the legislative session on stuff that might be affecting the planning world. Um. Let's see. I talked to Mike earlier about the twenty twenty four data and updating the land use analysis tool. He's working on it. Um, he's gotten all the assessor data. He's mapped all the B L P data. Um, and we should be getting everything. He's tries, he's gonna try to get it done by the end of the week, but he said more than more than likely it'll be middle of end of next week. So I won't have those graphs or anything updated for next meeting, uh, but likely the meeting after.
Great. Okay, uh. Well, I what I would suggest to people if you want to do it, uh. And I went through, obviously, and and wrote down the comments, so I thought we should address. And I would welcome anybody else doing that too. I think it's something that we need to address when we have. Care about it.